Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Northampton Township Board of Supervisors meeting. It is Wednesday, December 10th, 2025. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We'll start out with a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. Let's keep our loved ones that will be missed during the holidays and our thoughts today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before we get started with our special presentations, I just want to remind everyone there's two opportunities for public comment this evening. First opportunity is limited to agenda items only. If you'd like to speak on any of the agenda items, please sign up in the back of the room. I'll recognize you to the microphone and give you an opportunity to speak. There's also a second opportunity at the end of the meeting, which is open to any item that you'd like to speak about. Same thing applies. There's a sign-up sheet in the back. Just sign up and I'll recognize you to the microphone. So, we're going to start out this evening and we're all going to come down and we have a distinguished citizen award for Madeline Marriott. Come on down. So, every once in a while, it's great that we get some homegrown talent recognized by people other than us. And for those that you didn't know, this is Madeline Marriott and she was recently given the title of poet laureate of Bucks County. And we felt that it was important to recognize one of our homegrown folks. So I would like to read the award tonight. This is from all of us and from your whole community. So today, whereas the Bucks County Poet Laureate Program administered by Bucks County Community College recognizes outstanding poets whose work reflects the spirit and diversity of our county, and whereas Madeline Marriott, a Holland resident, freelance journalist and current graduate student in Writing Studies program at St. Joseph's University, for you, has been named the 2025 Bucks County Poet Laureate, and whereas after earning her undergraduate degree in English from Lafayette College, Ms. Marriott chose to pursue further study by enrolling in Writing Studies at St. Joseph's University, excuse me, St. Joseph University. At just 23 years old, she's the second youngest recipient in the program's 49-year history. Very impressive. She attends classes online while working as a freelance writer at the Newtown Bookshop. She works at the Newtown Bookshop and serves as staff writer for St. Joseph's University Office of Marketing and Communications. Ms. Marriott's body of work, a portfolio of deeply felt poems, stood out amongst more than 60 fellow entrants. Sixty, yes, sixty. In her capacity as poet laureate, Ms. Marriott has expressed a commitment to promoting poetry, literary arts within the local schools and broader community, helping to foster creativity, reflection, and a love of language among youths and adults alike. Whereas, that the Northampton Township Board of Supervisors recognize and congratulate Madeline Marriott on being named the 2025 Bucks County Poet Laureate for her exceptional talent, her dedication to her craft, and her contribution to the cultural and literary heritage of our community. Now therefore be declared, the Northampton Township Board of Supervisors present on this 10th day of December the distinguished citizen award to Madeline Marriott. So without putting you on the spot, you probably are the best one in the room with words. So would you like to say a few words and maybe a quick read of a poem? Okay, please. I'll hold that for you.
Thank you.
Actually, I'm going to give it to you.
They put a lot of information about me on those papers. So, thank you so much for having me. I'm so grateful to live in a place that has so much respect for the arts. I'm in such a great arts community, Bucks County, Northampton Township, everywhere. So thank you for having me. And I'm just going to read one short poem for you. It's called "St. Paul's Cathedral," which is a neighborhood in London. The wrong line on the tube, of course. Morning rush for the working people of London. Everyone swaying with a paperback, everyone with a dog ear near the end. My knuckles gripped too white as I rattle to the new rhythm. Back home, my best friend's father was dying. I was the worst person in the world that day, seeing something new. Everywhere we went, I thought of him. In every maple-soaked basement of a pub with a clever name, in the late evening light along the river. Beautiful places, places too far from home to be beautiful. Thank you.
All right, next up, in our special presentations, we have some folks from the Northampton Day Committee to make a presentation. And I believe Steve, are you making the presentation? Steve Brier? Wherever's more comfortable.
Considering my age. Good evening, everybody. We try and come in after Northampton Day's all settled down and here just to give a report to the township. Because if it wasn't for Township Administration and several of the departments in the township, we could not do this. So, Northampton Day is a 501(c)(3) public charity that was founded almost 30 years ago with the goal of bringing our neighbors together to celebrate our shared community. Northampton Day 2025 is in the books and what a great day it was. The weather was perfect and the event was well-attended. The Greater Kensington String Band was out in full force and gave us a great show. Also on hand were 125 vendors, a dozen food vendors, a terrific talent show, raffle baskets galore, the kids' marketplace, and entertainment for all ages. We were able to offer free admission, parking, and entertainment, including rides, inflatables, and games. People attending Northampton Day can enjoy a fun day with their family without costing an arm or a leg. The Northampton Day committee members are grateful beyond words for our community's support of our efforts. We are especially thankful for generous corporate sponsorship without which we couldn't bring Northampton Day to the community. As always, we greatly appreciate the assistance of Northampton Township Public Works, Parks and Rec Department, the police, fire, triumph, and rescue throughout the entire day and during the planning. Although we are a separate entity from township government, we do work closely with the township for this event. In addition to throwing a great party, we are proud to donate excess funds raised each year to local nonprofit organizations. We're very grateful this year to be able to make the following gifts with the excess proceeds from this year. The following organizations got checks for $4,000. Autism Cares, Council Rock Coalition for Healthy Youth, Northampton Township K-9 Unit, Comprehensive Learning Center, and the Warminster Food Bank. In addition, each of the seven Council Rock schools in Northampton Township, each of their PTOs got a check for $500. The Lions Club Foundation got a check for $500. And we give two scholarships to graduating seniors, high school seniors who have donated their time at one of our events. Okay, we are a small group, always looking for volunteers. In order to bring new ideas and programs for our event, we need new volunteers. If you'd like to join our group, whether you have a little bit of time or a lot of time, we'd be thrilled for your participation. You can sign up on our Facebook page or reach out at our website at northhamptonday.fun. Okay, I know many of you haven't heard about the dot fun, but we got it. As we begin our planning for next year's festival on October 4th, I would like to again thank you for the generosity and community spirit we have received and we look forward to many Northampton Days to come. And on behalf of our committee, we'd like to wish everybody here and at home a fabulous holiday season. Thank you. With me I have Scott Douritz, Pete Palestine, and John Bishop, who are also on the committee, but I hogged all the time. So, thank you, everybody.
Did anybody from the board want to make any comments? Paula, Kim?
No, it was a great, it was a success. It was very nice, very nice day, Steve. Thank you for your organization.
I think you guys did a great job. It was a wonderful day. And how much, how much better can you get given back to our community? We're very grateful.
Thanks for all the work you put in. It was a great day. We got great weather. My kids had a great time. We had a great time. So it was perfect.
I'd like, this is not related to that, but I'd also like to give Park a record quote. I don't know how many of you went to the Winterfest last Friday night, but it was an amazing, amazing event.
Barry, any thoughts?
Let's see, talk a little bit more, but that's dangerous. No, no, I think it's outstanding event for everybody. It's really a good event to look forward to every year. So we really appreciate all the effort that goes into it. I know it's a lot of effort to do it and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Always a great time. So thank you for the hard work, folks. It's really, it is a great day. We'll move on to public comment. Do we have anybody signed up? Thank you. Thank you. All right, first I'll do the best I can with the name Curtis Leister. Is that right?
Curtis Leister, yes.
Hello.
Hello. I first moved here in 1990 to Willabook Drive. Jim Kitty was my neighbor. I don't play golf, if you don't know him. He got me involved. I'd been here before. This is a great new venue guys got. I love this, right? I had moved away and I just moved back this year. Jim always told me that we were a bedroom community, that people would get up in the morning and go, summons us to work, Montgomery County, Delaware County. That's when the 202 bypass mess was really happening. People, the rush hour traffic in the morning, rush hour traffic coming back. If there was some way that we could have more business here to help with the taxes, that's what we're talking about tonight, right? I know that Delaware County, they have their big meeting tonight. They're having a mess. But if there was some way we could attract more commercial business in our township, that would be great. It could be like a high-end restaurant, maybe, or a venue that could be multipurpose. I go to Doyle Sound and Cabaret twice a month for meetings. And I would like you guys to somehow think about that, think out of the box, not just tax and spend like government people, be like a business person though, and try to raise more money for us. I just moved back here. I have two sets of grandparents that are 80s who are all doing pretty well. My grandchildren are here now. That's why I'm back here. So I'm very heavily invested in this neighborhood and keep up the good work. And that's what I would like you to try to do. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome back. Thank you very much. Mary King.
That's okay. Just say your name again for the record. Thanks. Can you hear me?
And you can tilt that down a little. That's it.
Okay. Good evening. For those of you that don't know me, my name's Mary King. I'm a resident of Casey Farms, which is a smaller, more modest neighborhood in the township. We all live in like ranchers in Cape Cod's and a lot of people like myself are on a fixed income. While I understand the need for an efficient fire department, I really do understand it. I was in healthcare for years. I don't know if a tax increase is the answer. What I'm thinking is, there's, I'd like to comment on the motion to finalize the preliminary budget for next year. What I'm thinking is the Tri-Hampton Rescue Squad 115 right down the road sits apart from this beautiful new station, Station 3. You know, as a trauma nurse, I can tell you efficiency and teamwork are key in emergencies. So, what I believe occurred in Holland is the Rescue Squad 116 and the Fire Station 73 have merged and they're in one building. Is that correct? So, you know, you have a director too of the EMS squad that's got offices in both buildings. And, you know, if you combine the two, there's room in this fire station. You know, you could house the, you know, both, both departments overnight. It would bring efficiency to both operations as well. I think coordination between the Rescue Squad and the Fire Department would be way easier for everyone and the vehicles could be housed in the same building. Please consider this option rather than taxing struggling people like myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Colin, I'm sorry, Unsworth? Is that right?
Yes.
Thanks. Sorry.
Good evening.
Say your name.
My name is Colin Unsworth. I live at the Spring Garden Mill neighborhood in Northampton Township. My son could not find affordable housing in the township and recently had to move an hour away for cheaper living conditions. The cost of housing, food, utilities, and now taxes have been skyrocketing. What is the Board of Supervisor going to do to make living here more affordable? With the cost of living adjusted recently now at 2.8%, raising our taxes to 8% is not fiscally responsible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Harrison? Sorry, I can't read your last name.
Kaner.
Kaner, okay. Harrison Kaner, thank you.
So again, my name is Harrison Kaner. I've lived in this community my whole life, pretty much. It's all I remember. I live by Village Shires and I just want to say that I believe it's a 40% increase to the fire fund in the budget. That just seems like a lot to me. And I wasn't able to see any details on what exactly that 40% is going towards. So I understand that we need to stay safe and that having emergency management programs is important and preparedness is important. But an increase of 40% at one time is quite a bit, especially when there's not a lot of information on where that 40% is going towards. So I don't think I'm in favor of that, but you know, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Laura Brenner Scotty?
Good evening, members of the Northampton Township Board of Supervisors and fellow residents. My name is Laura Brenner Scotty and I have been a resident of Northampton Township since moving as a young child with my parents to Richborough and my brother in 1973. My husband and I have raised our daughters in Richborough. I'm here today to address the proposed salary increase for the township's fire marshal, fire chief. As someone who comes from a family of firefighters and emergency providers, I have a profound respect for the difficult and vital work that these individuals do every day. It is precisely because of this deep appreciation that I must voice my strong opposition to this specific proposal, which impacts the very structure of our local fire services. My concerns and the, my concerns are based on a review of comparable compensation data, responsible fiscal management, and the principles of ethical governance. And this is in no way an attack on a person, but rather bringing to your attention something that I believe might be flawed with the process. First, the fire chief's current salary of $176,000 per year is already exceptional. Our fire chief is compensated at a level that far exceeds the vast majority of the fire chief salaries across Pennsylvania. For context, the average fire chief salary in Pennsylvania is approximately $105,830, approximately, with top earners statewide typically making around $155,873 annually. Our fire chief's current salary is already an outlier in the top percentiles, making a raise difficult to justify by industry standards. It is notable that the Northampton Township 2026 proposed budget did not reflect the fire chief's salary or proposed raise, at least not that I could find. Second, we must consider the scope of the position. The fire chief, to the best of my knowledge, oversees two stations, Richborough and Holland, because the Hatboro Road station is no longer open, with a current combined staff of what I could gather, 22 full-time firefighters and volunteer firefighters, though I was unable to find a current number for volunteer firefighters. This is a significant responsibility and it is my understanding that the fire chief is well-respected. However, the data shows that this salary surpasses, surpasses what chiefs in much larger and more complex municipal systems are paid. For context, Philadelphia fire chief salaries range from $110,000 per year to $135,000 annually. The proposed raise for our fire chief lacks justification when the current pay is already a state outlier. Furthermore, residents have noted that by function, the fire chief does not regularly or ever, I'm not sure, go out on fire calls in a firefighter capacity. This suggests a primarily administrative and managerial role, which while certainly important, and I know it's important, should be evaluated differently than a position that involves direct, high-risk emergency response. The current compensation level reflects a top-tier administrative role and a raise pushes this even further from the norm. And finally, but perhaps most concerning, the circumstances surrounding this vote raise serious ethical concerns. The fact that the incumbent fire chief is also the outgoing chairperson of this very Board of Supervisors and before leaving office will again participate in a vote on their own salary presents a clear conflict of interest. Pennsylvania's Ethics Act specifies that officials should abstain from voting on matters that would result in a direct personal financial gain. And while it is my understanding that the practice of a supervisor voting on their own salary has occurred since 2019, it should no longer be acceptable, as the action creates a perception of self-dealing that erodes public trust and contradicts the principles of fair and impartial governance. Rather than expanding an already excessive salary for an administrative role, I ask the Board to consider reallocating those funds. We have a separate proposal under consideration to move toward fully-paid firefighter staff to ensure consistent professional coverage for our community. That is where our resources are truly needed, on the front line, supporting the dedicated human beings whose work can and often does put them at risk every day. Considering the already high salary relative to state averages, the administrative nature of the role, and the ethical conflict of an outgoing official voting on their own compensation, I urge the Board to reject the proposed raise. Let's prioritize operational safety and fairness for our working firefighters and let's also ensure the actions and decisions of the Northampton Township Board of Supervisors are fully transparent, fiscally responsible, bipartisan, and that decisions are made keeping the best interests of Northampton Township residents and taxpayers in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I'm a little too tall for this one. Take a seat.
Sure. Just state your name for the record. Thank you.
My name, my name is Owen Bidwell. Can you guys hear me? Good evening. My name is Owen Bidwell. I'm a junior at Council Rock South and I live here in Northampton Township. I wanted to comment on Agenda Item 9D tonight. As you all know, the proposed budget includes a 42% increase to the fire fund, which creates about an 8% overall increase translating to roughly about $110 a year per household. Now, even though I'm in high school and technically not paying taxes yet, I understand that $110 a year still matters, especially for our seniors, families living paycheck to paycheck, and people already struggling with rising costs. For many households in this township, that money is very, very meaningful. And that's why we need to make sure that every dollar here is being used effectively. So let's talk about Station 83. As someone who's taught to think critically and not just to accept things because that's how they've always been, I genuinely don't understand how we have a fire building essentially sitting unused. While the primary fire response for the Churchville and Ivyland area is not coming from Churchville, it's coming from Richborough. We're maintaining a building that isn't fulfilling its purpose while another station handles the actual calls. To put it in everyday terms, it's like keeping a car fully insured, registered, cleaned, and taking up space in your driveway, though it has not been used for years. It looks official, but it's not doing anything. It's just collecting dust and draining our money. And the same goes for the equipment. If there are trucks or apparatus that aren't being used, why not consider selling them and using that money to support the department in a more effective and financially responsible way? It's common sense. If something isn't being used, it shouldn't be draining the budget. So here's my specific request to you guys. I would like to see a motion amended to include a serious, honest evaluation of repurposing Station 83 into something the community can actually use. Something through parks and recreations, something enjoyable, something that brings value to, value to our community. If the building isn't being served, if the building isn't serving an operational purpose, let's make it something to serve the community. Because right now, Station 83 is a very expensive placeholder. And if we're asking residents, especially seniors on a fixed income, to pay more, then they deserve to see their money go towards something that directly benefits them and the community. As a high school student who has lived here my whole life and cares about this township, I'm simply asking for a responsible and thoughtful use of taxpayer money. We don't need to keep, we don't need to keep something just because it exists. We can make smarter, more efficient decisions. And yes, even a junior in high school can see when something doesn't add up. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Owen. Ed Mayer?
Good evening, Ed Mayer. Churchville resident for 24 years. It's amazing, all the times that I've been here with just Joe and myself in the gallery to see all these people on a wet, cold December night coming to voice their concerns as residents. It just is heartwarming for our democracy. I too would like to comment on Agenda Item 9D, which is to consider the financial, I'm sorry, the final adoption of the 2026 preliminary budget. As you know, and as it's been stated previously, that's a 42% increase or 2.75 mils to the fire fund and only to the fire fund and to no other aspect of the budget. This is an 8% overall increase to the budget and I think others have mentioned also it's a This is an 8% overall increase to the budget, and I think others have mentioned also, it's $110 a month per household. My specific comment about the agenda item goes to the fact that in 2021, nearly 90% of Pennsylvania's 1,770 registered fire departments were entirely staffed by volunteers. And so came into being, in 1968, the Act 84, which was for Volunteer Firefighters Relief Association in Pennsylvania. That Act 84 governed spending rules and organizational structure. And so as I was researching that to see if we could have any pliability in that act with respect to the fact that we now have only five volunteers, as opposed to how many we had maybe 20, 25, or 30 back earlier, we're down to five volunteers and I think 35 or so paid firefighters. So we're not getting much relief from the Volunteer Firefighters Relief Association Act. And as I continue to investigate this, I'm sure Supervisor Salzer knows this as well, that act was repealed in 2010 and no longer exists. It's not on the books. That act was replaced in 1984, a 1984 act, which is Act 205. And that's the act that I want to talk about tonight. Act 205 is the Foreign Fire Insurance Tax Law. It created a 2% tax funding mechanism for volunteer firefighter relief, and it still governs volunteer firefighter relief today. So it's actually Act 205 that I'd like to go after. It permits use for firefighter and volunteer firefighter insurance, safety equipment and protective gear, training programs and certifications, rescue tools and apparatus support, and a fidelity bond and administrative and compliance costs. And this matters because this is how most of the fire departments in Pennsylvania get funded. And since the fire fund, as far as I can tell, and I'm not a mathematician, but as far as I can tell, the fire fund budget has increased north of 775% in the past six years. And I'm sure that there's many good reasons why that's happened. But today, when we look at the budget, when we look at the preliminary 2026 budget, we have to say to ourselves, are there other sources of income that we can find or look at that would stop the incessant increase in taxes? These fine people here, many on fixed, or some on fixed income, I won't say many, some on fixed income, pay an enormous millage rate for Council Rock School District. It's enormous. If you don't know what it is, you should look it up. It's in triple digits. We pay approximately 25, 26 mils for Bucks County. That's on its way up. And now we'll pay, I think, 35.75 mils for Northampton Township in 2026. That's a lot of millage. Even if you don't understand millage, or how that works, or average assessments, just know that that's a lot of money coming out of your pocket. So what I propose is an amendment, once the motion's made to adopt the 2026 budget, I propose that an amendment be made to that motion, which would include the expansion of Act 205, which is what enables these volunteer firefighters to get paid, and work with our legislators to change that law so that it doesn't restrict paid firefighter funds for pension purposes only, so that we can use it for more than just volunteers, volunteer services, and pension funds, because we only have five volunteers. So I think we should set aside a workshop in 2026 to discuss how we could propose an amendment to expand Act 2025 for paid firefighters. That puts us in a situation where this could be discussed, a conclusion could be reached, and then we would reach out presumably to State Representative Kristin Marcel, and Representative Joe Hogan, and State Senator Ferry, among others, to see if they could put in an act, an amendment to Act 205, both in the House, in Pennsylvania, in the State House, and in the State Senate. I think that's a, those kinds of steps along with what we've heard tonight about repurposing the EMS Station 114 over to Fire Station 3 and selling that property, not having two offices for the director, both that are 200 yards away from each other, that's a way to save money or get some additional income. Repurposing Fire Station 83S, a substation which doesn't go out as the first truck, so I know people are going to start wanting to talk about the five-minute response time. The five-minute response time is based on a 2.5-mile radii from the fire station. It's not based on anything other than that. It's a standard that companies adhere to. When the first truck is dispatched, the first truck, to the best of my knowledge, is never dispatched from Fire Station 83S. So with that, I just propose that we look into expanding Act 205, work with our state representatives, and see if we can find, you know, this is really what I talked about last month. This is about grit. Let's roll up our sleeves, sharpen our pencils, and find other ways to get money into the budget that doesn't have to be paid on the backs of all these fine people that are sitting here tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed. JP? JP Boekage?
That's me, but I didn't really have anything to say.
Okay. Thank you for signing. No trouble. And Ray?
Same.
Same? Okay. Okay, thank you, everybody. Thank you for your comments. We'll move on to consent items and approval of minutes. Paula?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, if I may, if there are no objections, I request that the minutes be approved by unanimous consent from November 19.
Any from the board? Thank you. Accounts payable? Kim?
Yes, I have the bills list for November 26, 2025. Total all funds, $378,678.32. I also have the bills list for December 10, 2025. Total all funds, $2,349,343.55.
Thank you. Any discussion with the board? If not, I'll accept a motion to accept the consent items as presented. So moves. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. New business? We'll move right on to the adoption of the preliminary budget. Bob?
Yes, as is well-known, the proposed 2026 budget was advertised for public inspection on Thursday, November 20, 2025. Following adoption of the preliminary budget on November 19, 2025, a copy of the budget has been available in the Township Administrative Building and on the Township website for public review since the preliminary budget adoption. I can wait to make the motion until after Mr. Pellegrino presents.
So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Pellegrino. Mr. Wirt, at the last meeting, there was a request made to look at the current cost of fire service compared to other like municipalities in our region, and I think Bob has a presentation for us.
I do. Good evening. I am going to start out tonight, although this is a consideration for final budget adoption. Since there were questions at the last meeting about the cost of fire service and how we arrived at where we are, I thought I would present a little background and some history, and I'll go through some financials, and then at the end, I will talk in general terms about the budget as a whole.
Can you guys hear now? Is it better? We have them turn it up. Is that okay? Okay, thanks.
Is that good? Everybody's good? All right. So the question is, how did we get here with our fire service? We now have a 24/7, 365-day-a-year full-time fire department. Let's see. It's not working. No, that's better. All right, here we go. All right, well, this all goes back to, actually goes back to 1990, when the first County Planning Commission report on fire service was done. And since that time, in 2018, the Senate, the Pennsylvania Senate, had a committee look at volunteer fire service across the Commonwealth, and they came up with a list of recommendations, but they also talked about the current state of the fire service in 2018. At that point, they determined that in the '70s, there were 300,000 volunteer firefighters in this Commonwealth, and in 2018, that number had dropped to about 37,000. And this is just a quote from the report. The report is online. If anybody wants to read it, I'll be happy to provide a copy. But it says, "The decline in volunteerism is a national, state, and local trend," and that proved to be true. We're seeing this not only here, but we're seeing it in all of our adjacent municipal neighbors and across the state. This is another quote from the report. It basically says fewer people are volunteering, that's resulting in a drop in service, and that local municipalities need to address the problem, or there has to be an expansion of paid staffing to provide the service, which comes along with tax increases and additional The second report that was done by the County Planning Commission was in 2021. It's actually a very well-done report. It looked at the county as a whole, and it concluded that the most pressing operational issue for the 62 fire departments in the county was staffing. Now, we all know that, because there's a lack of volunteers. And they cited the 1990 report, which also called, sounded an alarm for a drop in volunteer firefighter staffing. So in 30 years, things have just gotten worse. And in the past decade, it concluded that volunteerism is at an all-time low. Some other quotes from the report. Traditional volunteer firefighter, volunteer departments relied on the availability of firefighters who worked different shifts. So there were people available at different times of day, some people worked night shifts, some people worked day shifts. That has changed. According to the report, there are more people working steady day jobs, nine-to-five jobs. They're busy with family responsibilities, and they just don't have the time anymore to volunteer. The other concern or issue is that the firefighters and the positions require an awful lot of training. And I just know the initial training to become a firefighter one, which is not even an interior firefighter, is 200 hours, takes about four months to get certified, and from that point, you are, you can ride on the truck, but there are additional certifications and trainings that you have to have in order to be a fully-trained firefighter. The report also said that fire protection should not be viewed any differently than police protection. Now, the volunteer fire service has existed since the days of the American Revolution, Benjamin Franklin, and I think one of the things that people got used to was that there was a volunteer fire company, and we didn't have to pay for it. And that was particularly true in the Commonwealth. In our police department, which was started in 1964, over the years, as the township grew, there was a gradual increase in the number of officers. So the department grew with the community. That didn't happen with fire service. We had volunteers who provided the service and showed up and rode on the truck, and as the number of volunteers started to erode, there was a point where the fire department, or fire company, I should say itself, had to sound the alarm and say, "We just can't provide adequate fire protection anymore." But we all know fire service is a vital part of our community's service. So just a couple comments on our mutual aid partners. Mutual aid is a system in the county and in other parts of the Commonwealth that has adjacent communities and their services, both police and fire and EMS, help each other out. So if there's a major incident, our fire department, for example, might show up at a scene first, but there might be three or four other departments that show up from adjacent communities. And it works both ways. We go to them, they come to us. Point this out, because with the lack of volunteers, those partners also have a problem in responding to calls and getting trucks out. So there's a delayed response from them as well. And the communities that mostly support us are listed there, Ben Salem, Doylestown, Newtown, Warminster, Middletown, Lower and Upper Southampton, Wrightstown, and Warwick. The communities in Bold, Ben Salem, Newtown, Warminster, Middletown, and Warwick are all in different stages of developing and working toward career fire departments. They are not anywhere near as far along as Northampton, but they have some semblance of career staff, whether it be like we started out in 2009 with daytime service from 8:00 to 5:00, or 7:00 to 7:00, five days a week. They are at some level of progression toward a career fire department. This is a chart that shows a 20-year history of our volunteers. In 2023, we had quite a number of, I'm sorry, 2003, we had a lot of volunteers. The department, the company was strong. You can see the decline, and it was a pretty rapid decline, and the pandemic did not help anything. Our fire company had training every Monday night. They had an adequate, a number of volunteers that came out to train. Remember, volunteers, when they agree to volunteer, they agree to show up, but not all of them can show up all the time. And we consider a qualified volunteer, someone who shows up at least 25% of the calls. So in our case, we had a number of volunteers 20 years ago that were able to, we had enough of volunteers that we were able to get a call and an adequate response. Starting in 2010, we had daytime service issues, and the fire company actually came to this board, not this board, but a board, and said, "We cannot get enough volunteers out during the day." People were working, they couldn't get to the fire stations, maybe they're too far away. And that's when the township started in developing its career department. So the National Fire Protection Association is a national organization. It develops standards of care. People were working, they couldn't get to the fire stations. Maybe they're too far away. And that's when the township started in developing its career department. So the National Fire Protection Association is a national organization. It develops standards of care. Northampton falls into what they call an urban area. It's an area with greater than 1,000 people per square mile. And they consider an adequate fire response for a structure fire. Now, this is a major incident. With a minimum staff of 15, a nine-minute response time 90% of the time. Today, with our career department, we can meet that standard. Before, we had a career department, we could not. Now, some years ago, the board made a policy decision. And they said, "We need to reduce response times." Because response times were, and I'll show you a graph in a second, of what they got up to be on average. "We need to reduce response times to meet that NFPA standard and resident service expectations." When a resident calls the fire department, because they have an incident, they expect the department to be there as quickly as possible. That policy decision resulted in the township progressing toward developing a full-time career fire department. And that's where we are today. So this is a timeline of the implementation of the career department. I mentioned before, in 2006, the fire company, the volunteer fire company, came to the board and said, "We need help. We don't have enough people to muster a daytime response." The township applied for and received a SAFER grant, S-A-F-E-R. It's a federal acronym. And we hired four career firefighters, who were available during the day. They worked out of the fire marshal's office. And they worked with however many volunteers could show up to a scene to try and address calls. They supplemented the volunteers. They worked Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:30. And they supplemented the volunteers. At that point, in nights and weekends, the fire company itself still had enough volunteers that it could get to a call within a reasonable period of time. 10 years later, again, 2019, 2020, we were in the midst of the pandemic. It was very difficult to get enough volunteers to show up. And the board again applied for another SAFER grant. The first one was for $500,000. The second one was for $900,000. And the township added to the career staff by taking the existing deputy fire marshal, who was a longtime volunteer firefighter and the deputy chief of the volunteer fire company, and moved him to full-time career firefighters. As a full-time career firefighter, and we hired six more firefighters to expand that coverage to 12 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. That was the start of the career fire department and 12-hour service a day. In 2023, we hired a career chief, who happened to be the volunteer fire chief for some 25 years, and 10 additional firefighters. And that brought us to today, where we have 24/7, 365-day service. In that time period, just out of the Richborough Station. That was one truck. And the shift was that volunteer firefighters were now supplementing career staff. That was the major shift from 10 years prior. And then in 2024, we hired 16 additional firefighters to bring our total to 38. And that allowed us to staff the Holland Fire Station. And you all know, we tore down and rebuilt two fire stations. And that allowed us to staff the Holland Station. So now Holland had 24/7, 365-day-a-year response. One additional benefit of having a Holland Fire Station was that we could now ask our rescue squad, which is a separate 501(c)(3) organization, to house an ambulance unit in the Holland Fire Station, because now they had a place to go and stay and have an office. And that is the case today. And they provide service 12 hours a day, seven days a week, directly from the Holland Fire Station. The rest of the time, the response is from their Feasterville location. So that's a bit of a summary of the implementation timeline and how we got from no career firefighters to full-time staff. Why is Northampton unique? And we are unique because of our size. The map on the left is from the county report. And that shows, actually, the 1990 report. That shows that in certain parts of Bucks County, the purple in particular, and it was mentioned earlier, about a two-and-a-half-mile radius from any station, certain areas of Bucks County don't have that kind of a, they don't have stations located to provide that service to residents. If you can see where Northampton is on the map, you can see that we do. We're in that light tan area. And the two-and-a-half-mile radius comes from the Insurance Service Office, ISO, known as ISO. And that is an agency that recommends levels of service. And that's an agency that also has rates of fire insurance policies. And the proximity of a resident to a fire station has an impact on premiums. So that's where the two-and-a-half-mile radius comes from. It comes from the ISO. In our case, we have 27 square miles almost in this community. Fortunately, we have one fire company, boundary to boundary, which is great for us. It has been problematic for other communities in the county, having multiple fire departments and trying to move toward full-time career fire service and trying to pull all those different agencies together. We did not have that problem. We have 15,000 properties in this community. And that's what makes us unique. And that's why we have to have two fire station locations, at least, to provide the adequate response time that we have today. Now, the graph on the right to illustrate, the top part of the graph, the little circle at the top, is the Richborough Fire Station. And if you follow the blue line, that would be a path that a truck would take to get to the far reaches of the township in the southern portion. And that is a 12-minute, on average, response. So the Holland Station is very important in having adequate fire protection in the southern portion of the township. This is a chart that shows fire department response times from 2010 to 2024. You can see in 2010, we had, and these are average response times, about a 10-minute response. That started to go up a little bit. 2016, it was 11. 2017, 2018, it was 11 and 1/2. And the green bar are career firefighters. The blue bars are qualified volunteers. And again, a qualified volunteer is a volunteer who is properly trained as an interior firefighter and can make at least 25% of the calls. So you can see that there's a correlation between, from 2019 on, the hiring of career staff, the green bars, and a reduction in response time. So we are now down to a five-minute response time, on average. In some cases, it's faster. In some cases, it might be a minute slower. But on average, we are meeting the NFPA standard with the staff that we have. It was mentioned earlier that we have five volunteers. That is not an accurate statement. We probably have 30 volunteers or 40 volunteers on the records of the fire company. But we might have 12 that are qualified firefighters and able to respond. This is a chart that shows fire service cost history. So the orange line, if you will, I'm sorry, the, yeah, the orange line are the number of firefighters that we have on staff. Yes, and the blue line is what our annual spending was in thousands. So you can see that as we, and this shouldn't be a surprise, as we increase the number of firefighters, the cost increased. Until in 2024, we ended up with 38, which gives us one truck from the Holland Station and one truck from the Richborough Station to respond to an initial call. Those calls are supplemented by response from volunteers out of the Churchville Station, from our mutual aid partners, if they have anyone able to respond. Now, Newtown has had full-time firefighters since the 90s. They started out with daytime service. They expanded that to 12 hours a day, seven days a week. And that's where they are today. And they're moving toward full-time career. But this is, you can see the direct correlation between the number of firefighters and the number of the cost of the department. And there is a direct correlation. This chart is a little bit maybe hard to grasp, but what I want you to focus your attention on is the blue line. The blue line represents the millage that was levied for fire services. You can see that even though our costs increased over the years, we did not raise taxes for fire service to meet those costs. We used a combination of the SAFER grants, ARPA money that we received as a result of the pandemic, that was federal dollars. We took money from the capital fund of the fire department, fire company. And let me just talk about that for a second. When we levied the millage in the past, half the money would go to the volunteer fire company. All of it belonged to the volunteer fire company, but half of it would be sent to them to fund their budget for the building maintenance, trucks, et cetera, et cetera. And half of it would be retained by the township in a special fund that was used or saved or as a savings account to replace fire equipment as it aged out. And the fire company had, the volunteer fire company had a 20-year replacement plan for its vehicles. Now, fire trucks are very expensive pieces of equipment. And they were saving so that we could essentially pay cash when we needed to replace a vehicle. They were all, a portion of that money was also used for building maintenance, heater replacement, roof, et cetera, et cetera. And when we constructed the new fire stations, a portion of the money that the township was holding for the volunteer fire company was used to help fund personnel costs because they no longer needed it, because they no longer owned the facilities. So this is just to point out that in the past number of years, since 2019, we have tried to use other sources of revenue besides taxes to pay for this service. So in 2024, the administration, in preparation for the 25 budget, did projections out to 2030 on the cost of fire services. The top portion of the chart was presented to the board in September. And it laid out what the costs would be for paid fire service for the next five, six years. The bottom part of the chart shows an update as of November of this year. So in 2024, we said that the 2025 costs would be $6,355,000. And our projection today is that it's going to be $6,459,000. That's what's in the projected column for the 2026 budget. So we are off by 1.6%. Next year, for 2026, our projection was $6,812,000. And the budget is actually, proposed budget is $6,873,000. So we're off by 0.9%. And that is actually a credit to our finance director and her team for being as accurate as possible in our budget projections. I take no credit for any of this. We still have to refine 2027 and beyond. But remember, we've only been in doing this for a year. And we're still getting, we're still accumulating, I should say, some historical costs that in other parts of the budget really help us to refine our budgeting. And we will do that for the fire service as well. I also want to point out, when you look at the costs, and you can read that for yourself, about 85% of the fire services budget is wages and benefits. 85% of the fire department's budget is wages and benefits. The other 15% is for operating expenses, utilities, and things related to the building. So there's not a lot of discretionary funding here for much of anything. This is a chart that I was asked to prepare at the last meeting to compare us to other fire departments. Now, I surveyed communities in Bucks and Montgomery County. There aren't a lot of full-time fire departments yet. As I said earlier, many communities are working toward it. Some have different Some have different models. For example, Lower Moreland has, is working toward career fire department. They're hiring five more firefighters next year. But their model has the township funding the full-time fire service through the volunteer fire company. It's just a different model. They're just doing it differently, but they're all getting to the same place we are. This chart shows, and Newtown is highlighted in red because Newtown isn't quite there yet. They're still at 12 hours a day, seven days a week. But if you look at the comparison of costs, and I spoke with each of the, we got these numbers, I got these numbers directly from my peers, the township managers in these other communities. And there's their total budget, their population. You can see where we stand. We're at $171.83 per capita. Upper Marion's a little bit lower than us, all the way up to East Whiteland, which is $285 roughly per capita. We are the only community besides Upper Darby that has more than one station. And again, that does drive the cost. If we had one station, we would be, our costs would be a lot less. But our size dictates that in order to provide an adequate response, we need to have two And I think I'm going to stop there for a minute because the rest of the presentation is about the budget as a whole. Does anybody have questions on the fire services and how we got to where we are today?
I'll just start with you, Barry.
Well, I'm sorry, what are we doing here? So are we?
Just some questions about.
Ask questions, you have any questions, Barry?
If you have any questions, I'll just go right down the line.
Yeah, why, are we making the motion for the budget or what are we doing here?
No, I still have more to talk.
He has more, it's just a pause.
I mean, and I'm not being critical, Bob, but I mean, I see the analysis here, but there's so few townships that have paid firemen now.
You're right.
I mean, I have, you know, Southampton, right down the street, they're 100% volunteer. There's so many other ones that somehow they're working at. I support full, you know, I support the paid firemen, but I think we just need to be smart about it. And I think some of the things we heard tonight from people can really help keep the cost down. We heard about maybe doing something with the EMS building on Township Road. We talked about maybe, you know, that building has, you know, EMS people, we can move those people to the main firehouse. That would save a lot of time and effort, be more, much more efficient. And my understanding is the chief of EMS is now, has two offices, one in the new fire building plus in the old building. So if we move the EMS people from the township, you know, road, from that building to the main building, we could actually sell that building. You'd probably get a million dollars for it. And that's a million dollars of cash we use to pay, use for the fire department. Another thing that was brought up tonight, we talked about the firehouse on Happerell New Road. Yeah, I went by there again this weekend with my grandkids. It's empty all the time. That would be a great, wonderful place to make, you know, for a community center, maybe a teen center or something else. We should try to redeploy that and reuse it. And I think we can do that. There was four vehicles in there, and I think those vehicles, we could either use them or sell them or whatever. I know I heard that four, some volunteers spent the night there over the weekend, but they can spend the night in Richborough. We've got plenty of room over there. And the other thing I think is really important to focus on, too, Ed mentioned Act 205 funding. It's a little confusing, but basically, there's money set aside every year by insurance companies, and they give it to various municipalities. Right now, we have $2.8 million sitting in the bank account that we can't use for paid fire services. $2.8 million. The way we need to change that is that we need to contact Reps Marcel and Hogan and Senator Frank Ferry and say, listen, let's change the state law. Let's have access to that $2.8 million because we could use that. I mean, right now, your budget's over $6 million. $2.8 million is tied up in a bank account, and it's only for volunteers. The fact that we've gone to paid firemen, we should be able to use it for paid firemen. That's common sense. So I think there's a lot of things, you know, I support the fire department, but I think there's a lot of things we could do to be, you know, just smart about how we use the assets, things like that. You know, so that's one of the things I would like to talk about.
Sure. Okay.
Well, this board has no ability to legislate in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, but am I correct that there are so few comparable departments because predecessor boards in this township got well ahead of this? And this has been the implementation of a plan that was set into motion many years ago?
There is no question that this board took the lead in setting up a system that would continue to protect the community and the residents of the community and properties. You took the lead in authorizing and approving budgets for a career fire department. And you did that, I think, because you knew it was your responsibility as board members to provide fire protection, adequate fire protection.
Have you spoken with that?
I think that, I think that other boards in the past, and as I mentioned this earlier, we probably should have done this sooner and were gradually, over time, like the police department grew. But we fell off a cliff, and this is the result.
Have you spoken with any of your contemporaries in surrounding jurisdictions about the impact of their failure to get ahead of this, even to the rate that we have?
I think all of the communities, all the managers that I've talked to are a bit envious that we've taken this leap and I tell them that I have a board who's willing to make decisions and do what is right.
And as to Station 83 on Happerell Road, and I don't know if you can answer this, but my understanding is there's a restrictive covenant based upon the manner in which that property was obtained from the Department of Education. Do you know anything about that?
Yes, that property was given to us by the federal government, but like everything with the federal government, it comes with strings attached. And we have what is called a quick claim deed for that property. That was subdivided from the original Naval Warfare Center property. Part of it is municipal park. And the two acres that is where the fire station is located is a designated by the Department of Education, per our application, as a training center. And we do, we have to, every two years, certify that we are continuing to use that as a training center for the 30 years, until 30 years from the date we acquired it.
Do you know when that?
Which I think is 2028.
Okay. Do you know what the consequences of failing to meet those requirements could be?
I do not know that. I think they can take the property back, but believe that's the consequence, but.
We did speak to the people before, and it's not the Department of Education, it's the Department of Interior and Department of Navy. When we spoke to them before, if we changed it to a community center, that would be something that would be acceptable to them because across the street, the 39 acres, we talked about making ballfields there. And we talked to the people at the government, and they're very flexible about that.
That's true for the entire parcel except the fire station. The fire station is the.
Let's try them.
Is the Department of Education.
Yeah.
And as a matter of fact, we just got, I think last week.
We just had to file the report.
Got their request to file the report. So it is separate from the Department of Interior. Doesn't mean we can't do something.
No, I know.
It is separate. It's not part of the National Park Service parcel, which is all the rest of that property.
I think the most important thing is that we use it for the community.
And just so you know, it is regularly used by the Park and Rec. They use the room for yoga, Pilates. It is being used other than the firehouse. The bay part is being used, but the Park and Recs do hold classes in there.
Yeah, I mean, the bay we could use for pickleball.
I don't know how many.
Basketball courts. We could really utilize it. Another point I just want to bring out to you, Bob, when we prove a budget, we prove a budget year by year. We don't just say blanketly we're going to prove something for the next five to 10 years. So when we prove the concept of going paid fireman, that's done by year by year, and we review it every year.
That's correct.
And we talk to the community about it. This is not something we go to Park and Rec and say, okay, we'll give you a budget for the next five to 10 years, do whatever you want. This is the process we go through, review it every single year. So I know you went back and kept and say, well, we already made this decision in 2019. We made this decision 2019 to move forward on this, but we also said that we're going to review it every single year. And that's what we're doing right now.
I just, so I'm clear, were you addressing me or Mr. Pellegrino? There's two Bobs in the room.
No, I'm addressing you because you had made a comment saying, going back, that the decision was made in 2019 for this. And I'm saying, the decision in 2019 was merely to explore this possibility, but we're going to review it every single year, like we review every other department. That's how that works.
I'll come back to that later. Thank you, Mr. Pellegrino. Kim?
I really like the idea of trying, I understand that we have to fund our firefighters, but I also think that we have to think a little bit outside the box about saving some money and pulling our belts in a little bit. I like the idea of sharing the Station 83 with Parks and Rec and trying to, you know, light a fire under our legislators of getting that money. And I think that, I think that we just have to be smart, you know? And when we come up here and we're questioning things, it's not, it's not that we're attacking. We love the firefighters, they're heroes. But, you know, when we're up here as supervisors, we have to be good stewards of your tax dollars. That is our job. And sometimes it's uncomfortable to ask questions, but we have to. That's, that's what we, that's what we got elected for, so.
Paul?
Well, I definitely, I don't know what Barry is saying as far as making a decision every year, or, you know, maybe it's meetings that you didn't come to, but I know distinctly that we've been talking about fire safety, EMS, and combining.
My point is, we approve the budget every year.
I understand that.
So we approve the budget every year. Okay, that's a process we have to go through.
Maybe you missed some of the meetings that we.
No, I didn't miss any meetings, Paula, but, you know, I really didn't, Paula, but you have to go back to the budget process, and maybe you're not familiar with this process.
Well, I think our elected leaders, Barry, have to prioritize our safety.
Oh, I agree, we have to do it, but we.
Not over politics.
There's no politics here.
Yes, there is.
There's no politics here.
Okay. Well, I think we deserve safety in our township, and we all, as it work as a team, and we value our taxpayer interests. This is Northampton. This isn't Warminster. This isn't Upper Darby or Newtown. We're a big township.
Yeah, well, Southampton, that's where I work. And they're all 100% volunteer. I'm not saying we do that, but there are lots of communities in our area that are all volunteer. We're leading the charge here.
Yes, we are. We're forerunners in this, thanks to Adam, because we started preparing this a long time ago.
Sure.
That it? I'll go last. Okay, I think I can, I can.
And I'm not picking on you, Adam.
It's okay.
I mean, you know the process. I mean, budget's approved every year, we have to take a fresh look at it.
I think there's a few things I can probably shed a little bit of light on and happy, happy to share. And this actually asked, I'll look at Ed, 100% agree, the laws in Pennsylvania are antiquated, but I will say, you didn't know. And I wish you would have called me before the meeting and said, hey, what are you doing with the relief because you and I could have had a nice conversation before you got here? We put enormous pressure on our local leaders to change that law. The $2 million that you're talking about, much of it is tied up in capital replacement. Rescue equipment is extremely expensive. And so each year, we have a savings account, as Bob talked, well, the Relief Association has the same. The jaws of life, all those things that we have and use fairly regularly have to be on a replacement program. So a lot of that money is restricted, but I think there is some of that money that should be released. Recently, very recently, in the past few months, the State Fire Commissioner's Office, a couple of years ago, they created a commission for this, so it actually exists. They started to realize that combination departments were out there, and how do we use this money? Because it's legislated, they can't just say, go ahead and use it. It is a legislative issue. But they did give us some leeway very recently, and now we're starting to be able to use some of those funds to fund combination departments where they wouldn't allow it before. The problem with it is, they just said, basically, what you have been doing is okay if you have career people. So they didn't open up the gates to allow this additional money to be used or additional expenses, but they said they're not going to challenge a combination department because the law is for 100% volunteer department. So it is out there. I think that our representatives would not be surprised if anybody asked them, I mean, poor Frank Ferry, I am on him regularly about getting this law changed, because I do think there's, there's money in the state available to help us. To Kim's point, if we can find another way to do it, I'm all in for that. I mean, my, my hands are tied as far as the way we're legally allowed. And the Auditor General comes every other year and audits us, I mean, pretty intense. And the first thing they do is they pull out the career list and they look for everywhere where there's a possibility that an expense was made for somebody. It's unfortunate, I agree with you, I think that is, that is, it's, it should, it is a priority. Let me tell you, it is a priority. We are working on it. The Chiefs Association is working on it. The Pennsylvania Career Chiefs Association is working on it. There's a lot of people pushing that law. Pennsylvania is a very strange kind of state in that there is such a large rural population in the middle, they don't always see the benefits of doing these things that the folks on the eastern and western side of the state enjoy. And so it's a very, it's a tough battle in the legislature itself. As far as Station 83 goes, Station 83 is not the busiest of the stations, I will agree with that. We do have firefighters there, they're not there all the time. And it really exemplifies the need for what happens. It's a, it's a microcosm of what happens in a fire department as far as the volunteerism goes. We do have people there sometimes, and we do use the station. We use it for training, we do have equipment there, we do share it with Park and Rec now. That's something, I'd say we started maybe two or three years ago. Well, you know, we recognized, hey, this is a facility that can be used. So its utilization has gone up. The fire department, we really use the bayside. We do have guys that sleep there. Three nights ago, it was the first truck out to an industrial building, and it got there first. So it does, it does go out. I'd love to see it a lot more. If there's anybody that lives out in church would like to volunteer, please come. I would be happy to bring you in, train you, and get you on the truck, there's no question about it. The thing about the fire service as we evolve, I think it's fair to say you should reevaluate all your assets and resources. And we're just, we're really in year one, you know, of full-time, the impact of 24/7. I can tell you all, and I can tell everybody listening, without a doubt, it has made a huge difference in the safety of the people in this township. When they call for a fire truck or they call for a medical emergency, fire trucks and ambulances are getting there quick, on time, and saving people and property regularly. And I won't bore you with a whole list of them that I could go down. You've seen it in the paper, you see it on Facebook, you see the fires and emergency medical calls. It really matters. And people are always asking me, they have been asking me through this process, regularly I run into people, you know, are we going to continue this? They've watched a meeting last week, some people were happy that there's more questions, some people were very upset about it. I won't bore you with all the statistics of everything, I just want to say, it's about response time. That's what it's about. How quickly can you get a fire truck or an ambulance, because I'll put EMS in there together since we're kind of looking at them the same, to a scene? But it's really an important part to remember. Firefighter safety is critical. It's not just how quick can you get the first four guys there. Who's going to help those four guys if they get into trouble? Where is the next truck coming from that backs those guys up if they go into a house looking for somebody and they get into trouble? Well, you know what? I don't want to wait for a truck to come from Doylestown because we have to go that far out to get enough volunteers. The other volunteer companies, I love them all, they are all my friends, I have worked with them for years, they just don't have enough volunteers to give us the support we need. It's not just about the first truck or the second truck, it's about the other mutual aid companies coming to help us. Are they going to be there to have our back? Where are they coming from? I will tell you that, that our friends in Newtown had a fatal fire a couple of years ago on New Year's Day, over 20 minutes to get the volunteers there. No one's getting rescued in an over 20-minute response. It just doesn't happen. You saw that we have some 12-minute response. Our 11 and a half or 12-minute average means that there are some that are more. And they have been, because without having the Holland Station online, we didn't have enough volunteers, the truck had to come all the way from Richborough. You might say, well, can we count on Feasterville in Lower Southampton? Sometimes, but most of the time, no. Most of the fire departments use that 25% number. Somebody that makes 25% of calls, they consider an active. But that means they didn't come to. that means they didn't come to 75% of the calls. And there are very few firefighters that can go over 30%. It is just, it's a drain on your family life, the amount of training, all the things that Bob said. So I did want to address some of the comments. I think that was important. One other comment, I am regularly on calls. Everywhere in this township, I do not sit in an office. The deputy chief does not sit in an office. The deputy chief of EMS does not sit in an office. We are all street responders, because we don't have enough people, believe it or not, to not, to just have people that are administrators. I come out on nights and weekends, as do both deputy chiefs, regularly. Regularly, we are out on the street working that. So I did want, there was a comment about, it was purely administrative, and that's just not the case here. We don't have the luxury of that. And frankly, we need all hands.
And we're not Philadelphia.
Yeah, we need all hands. Now...
All right. Philadelphia's getting less.
The...
There's the suburbs.
Now, hang on, please. Please. Now, I just want to point out that I tried, I wanted to answer some of the things that I heard. As far as what Bob talked about, there aren't a lot of fire departments that are going to be, that are 24/7, but they will be very soon. I think our neighbor to the east, they're two firefighters away from going 24/7. It has to happen. Meeting that NFPA requirement is important, and I believe our people, most of the people, want that service. I think we have to be fiscally responsible always. I don't think there's any question about that. If you look at the budget slide that Bob put up, it's almost all labor. It's compensation. The part of the operations part of the fire department, we run very tight, and we hold tight purse strings on it. We always have the relief money. I wish we could do more with it. We just can't. We're pushing that. And that has been a buffer for us in the past. But we have enough volunteers to keep the relief money coming. That's okay. They don't necessarily care about activity. They just care about having volunteers. And we do, and we do have volunteers that are other than firefighters. We have our fire police that come out. We have a volunteer administrative staff that regularly comes. This is all people that save money for the township by not having to do that work. I can't say that enough. It's really paying the firefighters is where that money is. I think just to Bob Solcher's point, and then I'll stop talking, but the issue really was that we needed to have a plan in order to do this way back in 2020, when we really got down to the nitty-gritty of how this was going to go. And you can't take lightly hiring people into a full-time job. These people left other jobs to come here and do this work. They want some semblance of, you know, you can't turn it on and off. You just can't. You can't turn fire service on and off. It's a 24/7 demand on the township. So that's just my comments about that and some of the things that I tried to answer some questions. Not, I'm not trying to be argumentative. I just wanted to give some additional facts.
Thank you.
So, back to you, Bob.
Thank you. There were some comments made about the fire chief's salary. The salary is $176,000. The fire chief is also the chief of EMS. Well, he's in charge of EMS. Fire chief and EMS chief, director. He has responsibility for coordinating rescue services and fire services. That's one distinction. That is one distinction. I'll repeat what I said. The fire chief also oversees emergency medical services as part of his job duties, with the idea that those two organizations at some point would merge. Now, there's complications to doing that. Our Tri-Hampton Rescue Squad is a separate 501(c)(3) organization. We don't own them. We don't own their assets. We don't control them. We contract with them through, and pay them for their services. They also service Upper Southampton and Lower Southampton townships. So it is our goal to move people into the fire station in Station 3 from the Rescue Squad building down the street. That has been a goal. We've all discussed that. And that process is underway, slowly, but it is underway. The first step was to hire the deputy EMS chief, and his responsibility would be to help facilitate that down the road. So it's not as simple as just moving people. There are two separate organizations. There's two separate cultures. There's other issues that I won't go into, but the chief is overseeing EMS services. His salary was set by me, recommended by me, because he was a member of the Board of Supervisors. The second-class township code has a special process where an employee who is also a board member needs approval from the Board of Auditors to set the salary. So I recommended to the Board of Auditors, and they approved in a public meeting his salary. The salary increases in the budget are determined by the manager's office. The board approves the budget as a whole. We have a 3.5% cost of living adjustment for our non-union employees. That's what's in the budget. Some people may get more. Some people may get less, but that's the average. And we study salaries every year to make sure that we are paying competitively. There are fire chiefs that make, at least one that I know in Radnor, who has no employees, makes $165,000. Others in this region range from $140,000 to $155,000. There are very few under $140,000. Now, I don't know what Philadelphia pays. I don't think they're a good comparable for us. But that's a little bit about the salary that I wanted to clear up, because there was some information that was put forth that was not accurate. I'm going to move on if there's no other questions on fire service, because, again, this is a final budget approval. The board approved the preliminary budget. That budget was available for public inspection as required by the code for 20 days minimum. You must approve a budget for the township by December 3rd and 1st. So I'm going to move on from fire service and just very briefly talk about the budget as a whole. So you saw this slide last meeting. Our total budget is $66.3 million. $44 million of that is operating. $13, almost $14 million is proprietary funds. Those are the country club operations and our trash collection and disposal contracts. We have $5.4 million allocated for capital improvements next year. If you saw the last board meeting, Bill did a very good job of going through the 15 or so capital projects that we have. They're in various stages of either construction, bidding, design, et cetera, or preliminary design. And then we have about $3 million in costs for our pension plans. The police comprise the largest part of our budget at about 21%. Fire is 13.7%. Public Works is about 14%, and so forth, and so on. You can see the numbers there for yourselves. This is a comparison of 25 to 2026. You can see overall, we're about the same as 2025, at 0.16% change total. Some of that varies because of the amount we spend on capital improvements, infrastructure improvements. You can see our general fund is going down by 2%. The fire fund is going up by 8%. The library's going up about 4.6%. Refuge, about 3%, and Parks and Rec and Country Club about 2.1% to 2.75%. Now, why is the general fund going down? Because we are shifting the cost of the fire service from the general fund to the fire fund. This year, we allocated $2.8 million from the general fund for fire service costs. In next year's proposed budget, that money will be made up by increasing the real estate taxes overall, not specifically for fire, because, again, it's a shift in how we allocate costs. You have to look at the budget as a whole. And if we wanted to, we could eliminate that, not the 8%, because the cost of fire protection is going up about $500,000. If you look at the operations in the general fund, minus the transfer that I just mentioned to the fire costs, our operational costs are going up about $1.6 million. That's roughly equivalent to the proposed tax increase. You can slice and dice this budget 50 different ways, but it's like having a pair of pants and taking money from one pocket and putting it in another. It all comes out of the same pair of pants. So I have a couple other quick slides. Wages and benefits in our total budget for all departments is about 52%. And you can see the other costs. Operations are 20%. Refuge is 12% of our budget. We don't have any staffing or service cuts proposed for next year. It was mentioned earlier, the real estate millage would be 35 and 1/4 mills, up 2.75 mills, $1,410 per year, an additional $110 for a home assessed at the median of $40,000. Our refuse fee will hold steady through 2027. I think probably, depending on contracts, going forward, we might even be able to hold that fee longer. And the average township cost for services is about $117 a month, if you look at the nifty little bill we created that breaks down the various costs for the various services. Was mentioned earlier that the school district has the biggest chunk of our real estate tax bill. That's true. 70 cents of every dollar goes to the school district. The county is 13 cents, and the township is 17 cents. You take that little 17 cents, and you allocate it. 29% goes to police services. Approximately 20% goes to fire and public works. 13% is recreation, library, about 10% debt. And the rest is finance administration, zoning, administration, and so forth. And that is the end of my presentation. Are there any other questions on the budget as a whole? If not, I'm recommending final approval.
Bob, I just, I don't recall. Was there a slide just...
This one or...
No, I think it was if you back, I just want to kind of really hammer home. The 2.75-mill increase, how is that?
That's not in the slides, but...
Can you, how is that split up?
We can, if there's a concern about raising the fire millage, we can lower the fire millage. We can do that. We can absolutely do that. We can take it back to three mills if you want, but the cost of the fire department is the cost of the fire department, and it has to come from somewhere. So if we reduce the fire service millage, we'll have to raise it somewhere else. Likely, that would be the general fund, and we would simply move money from the general fund to pay for the cost of fire services, the $6.8 million. If you don't want to pay $6.8 million, you're going to have to reduce the service. And that's really what this is. The board sets the level of service. The budget is set to provide that level of service. So, again, we could reduce the fire service millage. Somebody else mentioned that the fire service millage went up, I don't know, 700 or 800%. That's true. If you go back to 2010, '19, actually before that, when it was 0.8 mills, and it gradually increased to three mills, which was the state cap, until a bill was recently passed that allowed municipalities in three counties in the Commonwealth as a test program to raise that millage to 10 mills for fire and five mills for EMS. Now, I will point out that a mill here is $585,000. So 10 mills is $5.85 million. You still need another $1.3 million to fund the cost of fire service. So going forward, even if we were at 10 mills, money is going to have to come from the general fund to provide that service. Or you reduce the service. It's no different than police services, recreation, library, any other service that the township provides.
I guess my question was more around, I think you said that the fire, we'll just look at fire, and then we can look at the others, too. The fire, year over year, the increase was about $500,000 from '25 to '26. That's 0.8 mills.
It's 0.8 mills.
That is not 2.75 mills.
That's correct.
The assertion and information that the 2.75-mill increase is all going to fire is wrong. It is being split up amongst other funds. How much is the police, year over year, budget going up?
The police budget itself, I believe, is up a million dollars.
A million dollars. So that's 1.8...
Right.
Mills of that 2.75 is police.
That's correct.
So 0.8 for fire, 1.8, and then I guess the rest is split up. I just really wanted to clear up that the assertion that 2.75-mill increase is all going to fire is not correct. It is not at all. And the increases in both police and fire are, the way I understand it, is labor-related, not operational, in that, because when you have new employees in emergency services, they all travel through a pay scale. And as they get more seniority, they go up in pay scale till they plateau. They, you know, it's usually a four- or five-year scale. And so that's really what we're seeing. I think that's important for the public to know, that 2.75-mill is not all going to fire, like has been spread. It is not, that is not the case.
That is correct. It's not.
But the 2.5 actually was buried in the general fund. I think one analysis you should look at is that in 2019, the millage was 1.05.
Yeah, we just can't, we can't compare a volunteer system that didn't have 24/7 to what we're doing today.
I just want to compare one thing, though. In 2019, the millage rate was 1.05, and I agree, we're all volunteer.
You're right.
That's right.
Yeah.
And now we're proposing it goes up to 9.25, which will fully fund the fire department, and that's an increase of 780%. So the cost associated with making this a paid fire department has increased the cost by 780% for the fire unit. And, you know, I fully support it, but I think we talked about some things tonight that we can do to mitigate those costs.
Yeah, I have no, I have no issue with the things to mitigate. I think we should look at everything and anything that's put on the table. I just, it's just, it's hiring people. It's the difference between... It's the difference between free people, the volunteers, versus hiring people at a reasonably competitive salary so that they work for us. And I was, I'm just a little more surprised, I don't think this is a surprise to anybody here, at least sitting at this table. I mean, it was very, it was very well laid out, pardon me, I agree, every year we should, we should dig in deep, no question about it. There's nothing wrong with that. Every year is a new budget year. But in order to do something like this, and every township is doing the same thing that we're doing, you have to have a forward vision and a five- and 10-year plan of what this is going to mean. You can't go hire 35 people and then just decide to turn it off one day, and then two years later say, oh, this isn't working, turn it back on. It just doesn't work that way. And so, yes, it is important that we dig into all the details, not just the fire budget, the whole budget. It's the obligation of the board to manage all the expenses, and sometimes you do have to make tough decisions. What's essential, what's not, what should go, what service are you willing to cut? I do know that in past years, when the thought of cutting certain services, the phones lit up, the emails lit up, you know? Yeah, I mean, we can make cuts. Where is that? Do we want to cut the road budget? Number one complaint in Northampton Township, at least on my tenure, was the roads. It wasn't, it wasn't fire, it wasn't police, it wasn't EMS, it was roads. Maybe a little zoning here and there. But I don't know if the board wants to do that, that's always an option. There's $1.8 million to fix the roads. You know, I don't think that that's the right move, but I'm just pointing out that there's other ways to do it. But going back to the 2020 timeframe and looking forward, it should not be a surprise to anybody in the prior board to this and to this board, that this was the path we were going on, and it was, this was advertised and talked about in many, many, many meetings, many meetings.
Let me just touch on what Barry said. You're correct, Barry. In 2019, the millage was 1.05 mills. It was subsequently raised in 2020 to three mills, which was the maximum allowable millage in the second-class township code. We couldn't go any higher for fire service. But our costs were going up. So we were paying for those costs with money from other funds, particularly the general fund. What has happened since that time, since the new legislation allowed us to go up to 10 mills, at your discretion, was that we started to transition away from the other funds and putting the millage where it was being used for the service. And next year, if the budget is approved, we would be at 9.25 mills. But we always had the cost. It was just that we were paying for it with other sources of funds and not millage from the fire tax, because we were capped at three mills. That didn't change until 2025.
And can I just jump in on that? Legislatively speaking, for those that asked about that, we worked really hard with Frank Ferry, not just Northampton, but all the departments that you saw in Bob's list that have career component. We worked with Frank, and he actually was the one that introduced that millage increase to accommodate the career departments, the combination departments that were starting to develop, so that it could be a more open communication with the residents, and you can actually see the fire fund. Before, you could, you would look at the fire fund, but as Bob said, there was a lot of money coming from all different areas. So it was Frank Ferry who actually put the legislation forward and got it through, that the collar counties around Philadelphia could all move to 10 and 5, fire and EMS respectively, just because of this conundrum that we're all in. All the township managers are crazy, you know, they're all trying to figure that out, you know, where's all the, how to do it. So it really did, it was, it was a legislative win, but I want you to, I want to point out, it's the collar counties around Philadelphia, and the reason that it's that, because it was so difficult to get it to be a state rule. So fighting that relief thing is the same barrier that we're going to have to deal with.
It's a pilot program.
I'm still on board with fighting the relief. I like, I challenge them all the time, but yeah, just.
It's a pilot program. We report any millage over three mills to DCED, Department of Community Economic Development, because they're tracking how many communities are moving in that direction with the idea that at some point, it probably makes sense to do this statewide.
Yep.
So I don't have any other slides, so I'll be back to the questions. Slide? Any other questions on the budget?
I see you raising your hand. Public comment is over. If it's just quick, you know, I'll take a couple of quick questions. Yeah. It's okay. Normally, we wouldn't do, just want you to come up to the microphone real quick, if you don't mind. Just state your name.
Bring the table up again.
Which table?
The table where you had the six categories in the total budget.
Yeah, let's see.
Sure.
Tell me which one you want.
My name's Everett Harris.
Are you a Northampton resident?
This one?
Yes. Yeah, this one.
Okay.
Aren't the six categories supposed to add up to the 44,000, 44,020? If you add them up, they come up to 49,500. That's close to 49,500, 44,000.
Okay, I don't.
Was that your comment? Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Unless something is inside, you know, unless the six categories are not fully independent.
Okay, thank you. I'll take one more quick one. Again, going off the agenda a little bit, but since you're here.
Ed Weinberg, Richborough resident, 41 years. Hi, thank you. So if you can go back to that regional comparison chart.
Sure. Let's see, that's, this one, this one?
So if I remember the numbers correctly, when you showed the budget for the firefighting fund, the split was like two to one wages versus operating?
85% was wages and benefits, and 15% was other costs.
Okay, so you just didn't have room?
See, the $6.8 million, 6.873 million, 85% of that is wages, and 15% is other costs, including building costs and so forth.
Those numbers were pretty small on the chart, on the budget chart. So my question is, why not add a column to show wages versus operating expenses for all these other regional firehouses?
Could do that.
I think that would be enlightening, because that kind of normalizes more assets versus staff, and that kind of.
Well, it wouldn't include assets. Assets are not included in these numbers.
I'm just saying, the more assets you have, builds up your operating expenses. Yes?
Thank you.
Okay, so that was, and then the, well, I had two comments.
Okay, quick.
So two quick questions. So going back to 2019, like the vice chairman spoke about, if I remembered correctly, if you go back to that response time curve over the years, at 2019, you were at the 9% magic number.
Let's see.
Nine minutes, yeah, nine-minute average in 2020.
Now, that's, that's response, that's time to get to the call.
Right, and the NFPA standard was nine minutes.
Yeah, we didn't have enough people, though. We didn't have the 15 people on scene. A truck might get there with two people. We still got there, but we didn't have enough qualified people.
Okay, so that was the?
That's the difference, yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Look, you can sit down. Our volunteers, you know, are phenomenal. I am biased. I am biased, of course, but they are phenomenal, and they come out as much as they can. But it is just not possible with the call, with the calls that we run, to have enough people in a volunteer system. Real quick, come to the microphone, please. Just state your name for the record.
Carolyn Buser Blacknell.
I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Carolyn Buser Blacknell.
Hi, Carolyn.
No, I'm a fan, not a fan. What I'd like to talk about, whether paid, not paid, obviously, this is crazy to spend so much money, but fire prevention is important to me. And my neighbor Ray, I gave my mother's electric scooter away to someone who needed it, in need, who couldn't afford a scooter for her mom to get around. And I wrote her a letter saying that our neighbor down the end of the street, I guess like six years ago, their son's, well, that's probably like 20 years ago, their son's electric cars, you know, those little electric cars that kids ride, ran on, they had it plugged in to the garage. Well, it went on fire. The whole house went on fire. It was a horrible experience from our bedroom window, watching the flames come up, and just, it stays with you. You can't escape that. And everyone got out fine, but it was a very traumatic experience for them. The whole house was gone. And so I thought, I would like, we were talking about money and everything, what about fire prevention? There's also, I found out there's electric cars increase your chances of having a fire in your garage. Like, what can we talk about fire prevention with some of this money to the community of people? Like, there's even a fire, instead of a smoke alarm, they actually have fire alarms that can go in your garage that, in 15 seconds, if it changes, like 15 degrees or whatever, it goes off. Like, just things, if we're going to have electric cars and we're pushing for that, California's pushing for that, and we know in California with the fires in paradise, that I guess the fire chief told the second guy not to put the smoldering fire out, and then it caught up after the winds came up and the whole thing. And it's like, there should be other things in place just besides money and paying people. And there's a lot of, I'm sure you have a lot of things that I don't even know about, about fire prevention. You know, I even got a fire extinguisher right on my kitchen now, because I'm worried, because I'm like, oh, yeah, this can happen, like, you should be ready for this. So can we talk about ways to prevent that and also have a fund for maybe people who can't afford to buy a new smoke alarm? Like, maybe that's $45, kind of expensive. So if we're going to be charging people an extra 110, can we have a fund that says, hey, I'm poor, I need a fire extinguisher and a smoke alarm in my house, I can't afford the batteries? I'm talking about, I know people can't process it, right? You're like, no, we have all this money. How could someone not have $45? Well, maybe they don't have $45. Maybe it's that food or the fire extinguisher. And just, just a form that goes around and saying, hey, here's the things, there should be a wonderful level, you know, this is what you should do. Because those things would prevent, we don't want firefighters to have to risk their lives. I don't want them to come to my house because I made a mistake and I didn't, you know, I won't plug anything overnight in the garage. I won't even plug a weed whacker in. I was like, I won't do that, no battery offer, we have weed whackers for us. Like, so I don't, if we could just focus on that as well. The budget is obviously a huge problem. The 25% is a little unsettling to say, the cost of living went up 25%, but everyone else's cost of living doesn't go up 25%, and we're going to fund that. So it's all just not feeling right. But, and the FDA, if that's where you're taking your information from, that's really not a good idea, because we know from COVID, from follow silence, silenced, that they lied about the safety of the COVID vaccine. And that's kind of, to go for the same agency, which I had no idea the FDA would be part of.
Can I, can I jump in on you? Yeah, because I do want, I want to, I want to respond to a couple of the things that you said, though. So I think it's, it is a good question, and I want to share with you that, you know, so, so the firefighters, yeah, we're paying for their readiness, and they're going to fires. They're going to fire alarms, CO alarms, all kinds of cars, trash, electric vehicles. They do all the rescues, you know that. All the people that have a car accident, when they get trapped, confined space rescues, you know, all those. Had an industrial rescue, people get trapped in machinery, that all comes off. We run all the, we ran EMS calls, the advanced life support calls. So that's why you see a fire truck and an ambulance. But I want to take a second and say, hey, what else do they do? What are they doing? I think it's a fair question. She asked about fire prevention. Our firefighters do all the commercial inspections in town, over 600 commercial inspections. Those inspections serve two purposes. Number one, to have public safety, safety for the public that are going in and out of these buildings, restaurants, schools, churches, and whatever, and firefighter safety. Remember, I talked earlier about how important it is that we make sure that the firefighters say, we don't want to encounter something in a building that we didn't know was there. We do fire prevention. Fire prevention is a heavy part. Community engagement is critical to the success of the fire department, because every fire we prevent is a prevented response. There's no question about it. We do school visits, fire drills, fire education. If you just got a new fire extinguisher, I invite you to come to the firehouse here in Richborough. We have a fire extinguisher prop, and we'll teach you how to use it, one-on-one. I would like you to do that. And we do that at all of our open houses, at all of our events. You probably saw it at Northampton Day. We always have the fire extinguisher prop. That's part of what you're paying for when you're, when you're getting career firefighters. We have a smoke detector assistance program. It's a phenomenal program. We've partnered with the Red Cross. We will come to your house, check your smoke detectors, and replace them if they need to be replaced with a 10-year smoke detector, free of charge, to every resident in Northampton. I've been saying it up here for months and months, every, every month I talk about it. No charge. We don't want our seniors up on ladders, changing batteries. We, and it's quite busy. It has been taking off. I know some of our senior communities, Regency, Legacy Oaks, the word has gotten out, and we go out and actually change smoke detectors for people. That is part of this. It's not just that we have guys sitting there with firefighters. We do community CPR training, life-saving skill. Four times a year, we open it up to the public to come to the station. We sold out in 2025. Well, probably we have to do six or eight sessions this year. We're teaching CPR for free for our residents. It's part of what you get for this. So I didn't, you kind of brought up, and it was a good segue, is to remind everybody that it is more than just going to a fire. There's a lot more happening with these folks. And, you know, people are talking to me all the time. They are very complimentary of our crews. We have phenomenal people. People are asking, what else are you guys going to do? It's, it's, it's good. It's good. So I'm sorry, Bob.
The resident mentioned the FDA.
I think she said SBA. You see, Small Business Administration? Oh, you said FDA, I'm sorry. I thought you said SBA, so.
They don't have anything to do with our fire.
Yeah, they don't have anything to do with us.
Maybe you're thinking of NFPA, the National Fire Protection Association.
So I'm just going to ask a quick question of the board, just real quick, Paul, before we make the motion. I think there's going to be a few more comments that are going to be made. We could take a quick break if we want, and then make the motion, because I think that some people need to use the restroom. And so how about if we adjourn for 10 minutes, and then we'll come back.
Do you want to do the, want to get the budget approved, and then do the break?
I'm afraid there's going to be a fair amount of discussion, more discussion. So I'd like to just have time to do that without everybody being antsy about going to the restroom. I think we have some. So we'll come back at 9:15, temporary adjournment. We're good upstairs? Okay, good. So I think we're about ready to have a motion and additional discussion. Mr. Pellegrino asked for a couple more minutes?
Yeah, just let me clear up one thing. The gentleman that asked the question about this chart and the numbers not adding up, he's correct. They do not add up. The chart is a little bit misleading because operations don't include, although we put them in here, the refuse and the country club fund. What's missing, so if you back those two out and you add in Rescue Squad, you add in Road Maintenance Fund and the debt fund and the Highway Aid Fund, that should add up to the 44 million and the 43,951. So we're going to fix that for next year, but I just wanted to clarify that chart. The numbers below are correct and the numbers above are correct, but they're not, they don't correlate.
They don't tick and tie.
They don't tick and, right, tick and tie. The other thing I wanted to mention, I had touched on it, that we have a cost of living adjustment in the budget for employees. It was mentioned earlier that the budget includes a raise for the fire chief. That is not correct. The budget includes raises for all the employees, the fire chief being one of the employees. That number will be determined once the budget is approved. So I usually do that. It's part of my responsibility as the manager. And as I said, most people will get just the cost of living adjustment. Some may get a little more, some may get a little less. It depends on performance and, and where they are in the, whether their salaries, as I said, we do annual reviews. We want to keep salaries competitive. That's why we sometimes make adjustments. So those two things, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, Bob, I'll ask you if you are prepared to make a.
Yes, if I may make a motion, Mr. Chairman. I move for final adoption of the 2026 preliminary budget.
We have a motion in a second. All right, we'll keep the same order. We'll just have board comment, start with you, Barry.
Sure, thanks, Adam. So as I mentioned before, I fully support the fire department and I understand, I understand the need for a paid fire department. But at the same time, we must be smart in how we manage the cost and the funding of this department. And it's something that we need to review every year and not be wasteful. One of the things I want to do is thank all the people who came tonight. I think there's a lot of good recommendations came forward. And it's very important that this board acts upon the feedback from the residents. We got to listen to what the people want. And based upon the input I received tonight, I would move to amend the motion made by Supervisor Solser as follows. I would adopt the 2026 preliminary budget as the final 2026 budget to include the township pursuing the following three items. The first item is pursue repurposing the fire station 83-3S at New Road and Haprell Road and transition that to the Park and Rec Department for community service and community activities. So that'd be the first item. The second item, I would recommend that we consolidate the EMS station on Township Road into the firehouse in Richborough. And then we sell the property occupied by that station, 1114, at Township Road, and the proceeds will go to the township. The third item, and I was pleased to hear that we are pursuing this, but to continue to pursue activities with state reps Marcel, Hogan, and Senators Frank Ferry to expand Act 2005 funding for paid firefighters. We could use this money, as we indicated, we have about $2.8 million in sitting in this fund. And from a military standpoint, if the military's $580,000, you know, that's over five mils. So that's a lot of money. So I think we should explore it.
I'll second that.
Well, hang on, it's not a second. The, the motion maker has to agree to the revision.
Well, I think it has to be second first, Adam, because I did check Robert's rules.
Oh, oh, wait.
My motion was seconded.
There was a second.
So Paul is second Bob's motion.
Right.
I made a movement to amend the motion.
Oh, so you're seconding the amendment. So now Bob has to decide whether he wants to amend the motion or not.
Well, now we have a discussion on it.
Are you willing to do that?
No, I'm not going to be held hostage at the 99th hour to something that hasn't been brought up in the preliminary budget that was universally approved at the last meeting when we just talked about the fact that there's a restrictive covenant on the one station and these other issues have to be addressed, not at gunpoint from this dais. Where would these things go into this budget?
Well, first of all, it's not at gunpoint. And when we advance the budget, we advance it to publish it to the public. And now the public has seen the budget and they've given us feedback. And I mentioned to you at the last meeting, we need to listen to our residents. The residents came here today and they gave us feedback. And one of the things is, we've talked about repurposing the firehouse at New Road and Haprell Road and transition it to Park and Rec. It's already started that process. Why not finish that process? The second thing, we talked about the EMS building. We already have EMS in Holland consolidated with the firehouse there. Let's do it in Richborough. That way we can sell that building and we can proceed at least, you know, probably a million dollars. That's two militaries. That would be very good and we can make it more as part of the town center. And the last thing, I'm just saying, continue to reinforce the activities that we have with Marcel and Hogan and Ferry to expand Act 2005 funding for paid firemen.
How are those line items in a budget?
I'm sorry?
How are those line items in a budget?
No, these are, these are amendments to the motion. We do this all the time. You can amend the motion, Rob, Bob.
No, you're asking to amend the budget.
No, I'm asking to amend the motion. So we're going to approve the budget based upon these three points.
I'm not going to change the motion without having had any discussion privately and you pull a stunt at the 99th hour.
I'm not doing a stunt.
Excuse me, don't interrupt me. You pull a stunt at the 99th hour for things that we generally agree upon because you want to put on a show for the public. No, I will not.
Well, I'm not putting a show. We're listening to the people here.
We've had four years to discuss, I've been here four years to discuss the safety and prioritize the public with, with fire safety.
We review it every year, Paul. I don't know what you get about that. You just do the budget every year.
I think you're coming up with these things and we need to think about them, talk about them, discuss them, pros and cons. We can't just.
And I just said, just have the township pursue these actions.
So, okay, hang on, hang on one second. Hang on one second. So we need to do this properly. I don't.
Right.
Fully understand how they go together. I don't understand if they are, if it's right to do them together, amend the motion in a budget motion, or if it should be a separate motion that we vote on distinct from the budget.
I believe.
I'm going to ask our solicitor to.
Okay, but I did check Robert's rules on this. And the fact that we've amended the motion, that we have to have discussion in that and vote on that.
I don't doubt you. I'm just going to ask our solicitor to comment on it so that we do it properly and make sure that we don't conflate anything here. Because I'm, I'm concerned, I don't know what the metric there is. If, if you're, if you're saying we should evaluate the situation with Station 83, by the way, it's Station 83, there's no S. I don't know what that is. It's Station 83. That's what it is, Churchville Station. We should evaluate how we would move the squad apparatus and things up to the, to Station 3 and continue to push the legislator for the relief. I think that's what I heard.
That's all I'm saying.
I don't know how, what's the metric there other than we say, okay, we're going to look at that? Or are we saying that there, is there some finite thing at the end of that that we should have a recommendation in six months? Or I just don't know how it attaches to the.
All I'm saying, Adam, just to be clear, everybody's benefit, I'm just saying, we're just asking the township to pursue that action.
Well, pursue is different than evaluate.
Well, pursue it if it's possible. How about we say pursue if possible, the repurposing the firehouse?
Well, Bob has to be okay with the motion. I don't, I think it's, well, go ahead. I can't. Joe, can you just describe how this should go?
My, my only concern, based on what I'm hearing, you, as a board, you are at the moment tasked with either approving the budget or not. And if you're not going to approve it, then one would presuppose that it needs to be amended in some fashion. If, if the, the motion, the motion I'm hearing from you, Supervisor Moore, it, it, it doesn't, you're not.
The condition said it would be approved.
You're not recommending any changes in any of the line items.
No, I'm changing any of the, all I'm saying, yeah.
So the budget itself, if I could suggest to all of you is, I think the, the, I would have some concern that, I don't know that you collectively can do a conditional approval of a budget. That we're approving the budget based on the fact that the township will do X, Y, and Z. The budget, because the manager and the finance director have to work off a, a set of numbers for the next year. And, and I don't, I don't think it behooves any of you for there to be some question as to the, the finality of that decision. So perhaps if all of you, I, I seem to hear some concurrence that these items you've mentioned should be pursued, should be looked at, should be evaluated, whatever verbs we're going to use by the administration. And I think that collectively you can give the administration that directive, but I don't know, I, it just gives me a little bit of pause to, to condition the approval of the, of the budget with, with, with conditions.
Joe, it's done every day. I mean, Robert's rules, this is very basic, Robert's rules. We had a motion to approve the budget. I, it was second. There was an amendment proposed for the budget. That was second. And the conditions I have are just simple conditions, that the township pursue, you know, these three actions. That's all I'm saying. It's not putting, you know.
But, but similar, as you can appreciate, similar to a rezoning of a property. When you as a board vote to rezone a piece of property, the rezoning isn't conditional. The rezoning, the property's either this zoning or it's that zoning.
We already talked about Bob having the authority to adjust everybody's merit.
Let me just, let me just, I don't think, Barry, it's a rules, Robert's Rules of Order issue. I think you're probably right. I think the issue is, is, is a budget a final budget with conditions? That's, I think, what I'm hearing. I'm not hearing that it's a, it's a voting issue. I think you can make the motion separate from the budget and we can discuss it and vote on it all day long, but it doesn't, am I hearing you right there? A budget that's approved with conditions is not an approved budget.
Correct.
I don't think it's true, Dan.
Well, I'm asking, I have to ask her.
And in all candor, I'm not entirely sure because in 30 years, I haven't, I haven't encountered this issue before. Budgets are either approved or in some cases they're, they're amended, but I've, I've never had one approved with, with conditions attached to the vote. And that's why I'm saying now that it gives me some concern for the five of you that, that a motion that says I'm approving it so long as the township does X, Y, and Z is arguably a conditional approval. And I don't believe that the law allows for a conditional approval of your budget. It's either approved or it's not. So I, I don't think there's anything to stop the board from, from giving, again, giving the manager direction to do what it is you're asking him to do. But I'm concerned, I'm concerned that by attaching conditions to the. But I'm concerned, I'm concerned that by attaching conditions to the motion to approve it may affect the, for lack of a better word, legitimacy or finality of the budget. That's, that's my only...
Go back to zoning though, Joe. We all do this all the time.
Can I just, can I just make a mention, Barry? And maybe this is helpful. I think we did hear from people tonight, which I do appreciate. We heard from, not a huge number, but we heard from a number. I heard from people between the last meeting and this weekend. I haven't even got a chance to say what I've heard. I think other board members have heard from people as well. One thing about the firehouse at Churchville that I think we're missing, one thing that we're missing when we talk about moving the rescue squad is, we didn't properly give notice to the public to come and speak about it. It's not on the agenda and we didn't allow the public to say, hey, I want to go say, don't close my firehouse in my, in my area. Or that I don't, or that I do want to close the firehouse in my area. What I'm thinking here is that we should, not me, but the future board should put it on the agenda and make it a point where people can come and actually speak about the issue to the board. As opposed to, we heard a few people tonight, we have some personal opinions on how this should go, and let's attach it to arguably the biggest decision that we make all year. I don't think it's fair to the public that a 40-plus thousand people that live in Northampton, that they don't get to come in and weigh in on that, whether we should pursue it or evaluate it or whatever words. That's just my point.
Let me clarify though, Adam. I agree with you. All we're asking is a township to pursue it. The township would have to come back to us with an order and saying, these are the actions you need to do in a public meeting to approve that. We need to contact the Department of Education. We need to do four or five other steps. That would come back to this board in a public meeting. All I'm simply saying is this is an opportunity for the fire building in Haprow, New Road to be better used. Just please pursue, look into it, see if we can do that. That's all I'm asking. And then come back to the board and say, yes, I can do it.
I just don't think that needs to be attached to the motion of the budget.
Well, I want to make...
Are you concerned that it won't get done?
It doesn't need a motion at all.
Yeah, it does. It does.
No, for Mr. Pellegrino to explore what the options are with the firehouse, Mr. Pellegrino, does that require a motion?
Not as, if the board's consensus is that we're tasked to do that, we're going to do it.
So I just want the board to have consensus to do that.
Then why are you bringing it up now instead of in an executive session where it's discussed privately?
Because I want to do a public meeting, Bob.
Before the township has given notice that it's on the agenda so the township can weigh in on those specific issues. You're doing it because you're trying to tie it to a budget.
No, Bob, I'm not going to be hiding. I want to do it in a public forum. It was issues that came up tonight. It's not that complicated. All we're saying is we want the township to pursue looking at doing it.
You're right. It's not that complicated.
The other thing is we're asking them to pursue the opportunity of exploring consolidating the EMS building on Township Road and to the firehouse.
I don't think we can have, I think we heard from the solicitor, I believe.
He's on sir. He doesn't know. Are you, you're 100% right on this, Joe. We can't adapt it, adapt it.
No, I'm not. And again, but I am, I am suggesting to you that, A, the two courses of action that the board is currently on, one of which is to approve the 2026 budget, and the other is to direct the administration to undertake several issues, can be accomplished without tying them together. And my suggestion to you, my recommendation to you is, is not to tie them together because otherwise you are arguably giving conditional approval to a budget that the second-class township code doesn't, doesn't provide for. You either have to have adopted a final budget by December 31st or you haven't. And if you're going to say that as part of that motion, the administration has to do X, and I don't know what the barometer is then to determine if the township has done X, or if they've done X to the, to whatever standard it is that a majority of the board believes should have been done under some timetable or, you really start to put yourself into a murky area that, again, I don't think you need to do. Based on what I'm hearing all of you say, I don't think there's a disagreement on, on the concepts that you're seeking to include into the motion. And perhaps you can all do, you know, deal with it with a subsequent direction or what have you, but...
I think because this, you know, this is a legal issue, it sounds like, and we've had really no time to evaluate it before the meeting. This should have been brought up prior to this meeting so we fully understood how to do it, what the mechanism was.
We've talked about this before and the...
No, we haven't talked about it before. We haven't talked about tying the motion.
We have talked about the firehouse on New Road.
No, 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 no.
We have talked about it.
Hang on, Barry, let me finish. We haven't talked about tying a conditional motion to the budget. I don't have an issue with your motion and what you're asking. That is not what I'm saying. What I am saying is I don't believe we can leave here with a conditional budget. Either it's approved or it's not approved, and there's a process for both. What I think I'm hearing from the solicitor is that he has great concern that it is not approved, so if there's conditions on it. But because there's been absolutely no opportunity to look at this prior to the meeting, I'm not saying we should or shouldn't have done it, but it would have been good to have an opportunity to say, okay, this is the way, even if you had asked it privately, just so you, that we understood and Joe came prepared to give proper advice to the board. What I'm hearing right now is that it is a conditional improvement and that the second-class township code does not allow that.
This was clearly premeditated. Unless you were looking at Robert's rules and investigating the exact procedure of this motion on the brief recess you didn't know we were taking, this was premeditated. So instead of bringing this up to us in the back where we could be prepared to address this, you pulled a stunt and you did it out here. It's transparent and it's endangering the budget. And if that's what you want to do, endanger the budget, continue down this path and we'll vote.
We do this all the time with planning and zoning.
Barry, I think you want to debate right now.
But we're not allowed to have a conditional budget.
I don't think it's true. I really don't.
But our solicitor is saying...
He doesn't know.
Well, he's saying it's his opinion. Well, if he didn't know, then we should have talked about this before we got out here.
I didn't think it was that issue. I checked Robert's rules and I thought it was...
Robert's rules doesn't, doesn't apply to the second-class township code of the state of Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. It just applies to how we run the meeting. I don't have any issue with your Robert rule. It's probably true. You can amend and do that. I have no issue with that. I have an issue, my opinion is, we have to either approve or reject the budget, no conditions. That's what I'm hearing. I don't know. Does anybody see it differently?
I hear it the same way.
Kim?
Black and white.
I'm just worried that if we don't do it the way Barry wants to do it, that it's just going to get lost and we're never going to do it.
Do what?
We're never going to look into it.
Do what?
Pursuing these three items.
Looking to...
How do they change the budget that we're here to approve or not?
Well, how about we do a compromise here? Adam, how about a compromise? How about we have a motion first to request that the township pursue those three actions? And then this board votes on that motion to pursue the three actions I identified, which I can repeat. Let's vote on that first, then after that, let's vote on the budget.
I think, I think, hang on, the motion on the floor is the budget. We can do yours second. We could do it afterwards. But we should, during that discussion part of that motion, remember, this is not on the agenda.
But the budget, I'm trying to look for opportunities to save money for the Fire Department. We're increasing on Fire Department.
Barry, I'm all for changing that fire station. I mean, I think your ideas are good, but we can't do that right now.
I would say it's save money for the township. The increase is across all funds. I understand that you're, you're looking at the Fire Department right now, but a save for the township, wherever it comes from, is a save for the people.
Exactly.
Right? And so maybe there are different opportunities that we haven't heard from, from anybody. That's, that's neither here nor there. The issue is, how do we handle the budget? We have to vote on the budget. If you want to have a motion after the budget, because that's the motion that's on the floor, then we can do that and then we can have discussion around that. I'm okay with your motion. I'll tell you ahead of time, I don't like pursue, I like evaluate. That's what I would be more associated with. I want to hear the rest, but I think we need to finish the budget.
Barry, we're a team here. Let's just be a team. I feel like we're not being a team.
Would you support those three concepts?
Let's talk about it.
Let's talk about it. Exactly.
Barry, let's talk about that at the time of the motion. That's when the discussion should happen. That's when, the discussion really should be for the board. So what I'm going to ask you to do is to rescind your amendment and we will have a second, a vote right after this on your, on your new motion.
Okay, I'll rescind it.
You second? Okay, so let's get back to the motion. Can you make the motion again, Bob? Sorry.
Move for final adoption of the 2026 preliminary budget.
Barry, you made the first comment. Do you have any other comment?
No.
I'll second that.
Okay, well, we have a motion and a second. Bob, so you're up next for a comment. We'll just go right down.
I do have a few things to say. And I'm going to start by saying, I thank everyone for coming, whether you agree with part, none, some of what I'm about to say. I say, every year when I sit up here, and generally speaking at this meeting, this is a completely empty room. I say, it's a shame that our citizens didn't come review the budget, come here, listen, get involved. Whether you agree with our final decision or not, this is your township, this is your budget, we are your elected representatives, and it drives me insane that more people don't get involved. So I'm glad to see so many people here. And I hate to say young man because I sound like my father, but to the young man, and you are a young man compared to me sadly, thank you for coming. It's really heartening for me to see people in high school caring enough. And you said you're an independent thinker and you ask questions. Question everything. It will serve you well. So thank you for being here and thank you for asking those questions. But also listen to the answers. You wouldn't possibly know that there was a restrictive covenant on that fire station, but you're asking good questions. Don't stop doing that. I hope to see you again here soon. Now, there's been an unfair focus, in my opinion, on the correlation between the tax increase and the Fire Department. Certainly, a large portion of the tax increase is dedicated to fulfilling the promises made by this board and predecessor boards beginning long before my election, greater than four years ago. This tax increase, however, is not purely based on a need to fund the Fire Department. And in fact, as you heard from Mr. Pellegrino, if you were to break it down, although it is money from one pocket to the other, the largest piece of the increase of the tax pie, as I'll call it, the increased pie, relates to the Police Department and the new contract all five of us up here enthusiastically supported very recently, and I will note, kept us from costly arbitration that would have been conducted in part by our solicitor. In many ways, I see the Police Department and the Fire Department in the same light. They are here to help protect the community at its lowest points. Nobody calls 911 to have a friendly chat with the dispatcher. You call in emergencies, many of which involve matters of life and death. When I was elected to this board in November of 2021, I had many questions about the plan already in motion to transition to a full-time Fire Department because, as with many in the general public, I really didn't know the details. The idea that anyone on this board doesn't know what to tell you, the residents, who are inquiring about any portion of a tax increase that relates to the Fire Department is simply mind-boggling. Tell them what you told me when I joined the board, what you heard tonight. We, as with the rest of the Commonwealth and seemingly the rest of the country, we don't have sufficient volunteer firemen anymore. No matter how much we wish that wasn't the case, it is. So that left us with two options. Bury our heads in the sand and act surprised when nobody is available to respond to emergency calls and fires, or implement a transitionary plan to create and fund a full-time department to serve you, the residents. That plan was unanimously approved by this board long before I was elected and has been enthusiastically supported by every single member sitting up here for every year I have served. Literally, nothing has changed. Literally, nothing is of any surprise if you've been paying attention up here. And unfortunately, as we all know, there was no way to replace unpaid volunteers with full-time employees without funding. It is simply impossible. At the last meeting, I openly invited the community that I serve, who had concerns or questions about the budget, contact me. I made that specific request from up here. I'm happy to say a number of people did. I'm going to just read a couple of excerpts from the things I heard. I reviewed prior year's budgets and took note of the 2020 budget presented before your time in December of 2019. During that budget, the board at that time implemented a multi-year plan to transition to a full-time paid Fire Department, primarily due to the declining number of volunteers. At this point, it would be irresponsible not to continue to fund the Fire Department and continue and finish the investment of converting to a full-time paid Fire Department. And I'm not going to name names, I'm just simply going to read excerpts. Here's a separate one. The difference between life and death can be if only. So my point to this is, and this is all capital letters, absolutely, I support our EMT paramedic firefighter services. Who knows, the next person that can lose their life could be someone close to us and need those minutes, meaning the response minutes. Separate, I wanted to write you as a longtime resident of Northampton Township. Across the nation, municipalities are increasingly adding paid emergency responders due to the critical shortage of volunteers. Northampton Township's proactive approach to ensuring adequate staffing positions our community, and I think that was a typo, a word was left out, but I'm reading verbatim, to continue providing fast, professional, and reliable emergency services even as challenges grow. A separate one, I was a volunteer firefighter for over 10 years. When I joined, we had many members at all three stations regularly responding to calls. As time passed, the volunteers left the service. The response rate declined significantly. I realize the remaining volunteer firefighters may have difficulty responding to and working emergency calls. Our full-time firefighters provide improved response times in service. I feel safer knowing that a full firefighting crew will respond within minutes if my family needs them. I did receive one response that, I won't characterize as negative, but certainly asked legitimate questions. I responded to that resident and said, as I will say to all of you, I answer to you. And I offered this individual my personal cellular phone number. I said, please contact me and we will find a time to speak. That person who may or may not be watching now responded and thanked me for my response, declined my invitation to speak, and then proceeded with a much lengthier and much, we'll say, more negative response that was riddled with inaccuracies. So when you talk about the community responding, I invited the community to respond in as much as I could, and those are the responses I got. The other thing I want to note about tax increases, I do not discount, when you call it 110, 112, put whatever number on you, you want on it, $5. I don't discount, and it is not for us to judge what is or is not a lot of money to anybody. It's a serious task that we undertake when we discuss a tax increase. I think everyone here knows the cost of everything has gone up. I don't know how anyone could expect that somehow the township is immune from those cost increases. We are not. And I understand that most people, you'll get notice from your mortgage company, your monthly mortgage is increasing, but it's not your mortgage, it's your taxes that are increasing. As was noted in the slide presentation, and I checked my own taxes, actually, of what I remit in taxes, 31% is in property and 69% is in the school. So when you get that letter and the taxes went up, we're not necessarily seeing that money. The vast majority of your tax dollars are going to the school. And as was noted, while 31% of my taxes went to property, the township doesn't see 31%. The township sees 17 cents on every tax dollar. We collectively strive, Mr. Pellegrino, his employees strive to stretch that 17 cents of every dollar as far as it possibly can be stretched. Nobody sitting up here wants to raise taxes. Nobody up here wants to pay those increased taxes. However, I don't serve in this role to make easy, short-sighted decisions. I certainly don't sit here to make decisions that serve my own interests. The continuation of this board's commitment to ensuring top-notch emergency services are available to its citizens is, to me, non-negotiable. It was suggested that we review the budget every year. That was said to me as if I didn't know it, as if I don't attend this meeting every year, as if we don't address the budget every single year. Yet, I have not heard a single suggestion of what should be trimmed from this budget. Not one. Where is the money coming from? What are we taking out of the budget? I haven't heard a single suggestion. I want to read two quotes, see if anybody up here recognized them, in relation to the firehouses and to paid firemen and the transition this board undertook long before I was elected. Quote, "People have to keep in mind, these are things for the next 75 to 100 years, and they're very important structures in our town. The last thing you want to hear is that if you have a fire in your house, or something that you know nobody is available to, you know, hop on a fire truck and come to your house, and the fact that we have paid staff now, we have these great facilities coming online right now, I'm just very pleased with that. Adam and Bob, congratulations, you and your staff, job well done, thank you." As it relates to the firehouses, quote, "We're letting the residents of the township pay for it over 25 years. We're also in an ideal interest rate environment to borrow the money." So it's really a perfect time to do it and be honest, to be honest from my perspective, there's no need to justify the need for it. I don't agree with that. We definitely need it. And purely from a financial standpoint, I'm saying our timing couldn't be better, so I fully support it. Do you know who made those quotes?
Well, Bob, thank you for putting me. That's very good. But once again, I support the full-time fire department, but we have to be smart the way we spend money. That's all I'm saying. It's very simple.
Who up here has ever said anything to the contrary?
Well, I'm proposing three options here to save money for the township, and you're saying you don't want to do it.
No, you're not. No, I'm not. And no, you're not. We're talking about the budget. You haven't suggested one cut the budget.
It's all part of the budget, Bob.
No, it's not.
Bob, I'm sorry, you just don't understand it.
We have to have the discussion for that motion.
I understand exactly what's going on.
You really don't, Bob. It's sorry. I'm sorry about that.
Anything else, Bob? Kim?
That's all I have.
No comment at all?
No.
Paula?
I'm very frustrated right now, because I think we're debating. You're asking questions if we can amend the budget, and you're starting a debate, Barry. This is a debate. This is not just a question.
That's what we're here for, Paula. We're here to debate the issues.
I think we should pass the budget, or don't pass the budget and get on with it. This other thing has not been discussed, and we need, all need to agree. We're a team, and we value all the township's interests. We are not here for ourselves. We aren't. I don't know, maybe you are, but we're not here for ourselves. We are here to make the township better.
I agree.
You know, we were elected to do that.
Paula, this is an environment that we debate the issues in front of the public. We talk about the pros and cons of it. That's how this process works.
It's not debate by ambush, and that's what you're doing.
It's not an ambush, Bob.
Yes, it is.
Oh, come on, Bob. You typed up a thing, you know, two days ago or something like that? You had this written story?
Because I knew you'd pull a stunt, I just used your own. Don't interrupt your own words.
Come on.
Anything else, Paula?
No, thank you.
I don't like to gavel our own people here.
Okay.
All right. Comments from me? I think I've said it already a few times, but I think we need, we need to move forward. The question really is, is of all the services that we've talked about in the budget, I think, Bob, you just said it, I didn't hear anybody say, I will do without X. I'll do without pothole repair. I'll do without park and rec. I'll do without one station of the firehouse. I'll do without five police officers. I didn't hear any of that. I heard, hey, guys, go find something to, find a way to save money, which we do have an option, I'll recognize that, there is something that's put on the table. But I haven't heard anybody come and say, we should not do X. Because, and I believe people love living in this township. For 17 cents on the dollar, they got everything I just mentioned. I don't like tax increases either. This is, it's a painful, painful part of being on the board. In the particular case of the fire service, and I, and I recognize I'm much closer to it than everybody else, in a lot of ways, it's good that I'm closer, because I have felt the pain of being on the street in front of a burning house and waiting for the firetruck to come, and not hearing the siren, which is terrifying. It is terrifying. We've, we have fixed that. We have made Northampton a much, much safer place for our residents, and we should be proud of that point. Don't let that get lost in this. But I haven't heard, let's get rid of pickleball, let's get rid of, you know, the municipal park. None of those services wanted to be cut either. And I'm hearing that nobody wants to cut the fire service either. I think I'm hearing that, or any emergency service. So two choices, folks. Either we cut services, or we pass the budget. And overwhelmingly, I think people are saying, do better, go out and look for better ways. I'm sure you'll be back next, next December, you know, look for better ways. But today, the feedback that I got from everybody is, I like living here. And I don't want to pay more. I've heard that over and over again. Some, some people in this room have browbeat me to death on it. And in some ways, we are also making up for some lost time. I don't mind saying it, I've said it before, our roads need help. And there were many, many years where, when the budget got crunched, that's where they went. I get it, I don't, I don't, I'm not criticizing, I'm just saying that's the fact. And so now, in order to keep up, we have to spend a lot more on roads now than we would have if we had just kept the maintenance. And we should look at our infrastructure that way. That's for future boards, not for me. So the other thing I just want to mention is that is a little bit lost in the fire. The fire, volunteer fire company still is very much a part of the total fire department operations in that the operational point, with the exception of the things that have to be called out in the township budget around personnel, the operations are managed by the volunteers still. And I want to tell you, it's a tight, tightly wound, tightly monitored budget. To run a fire department our size with $300,000 in operational, that means, and let me tell you, the four places that almost all that money is spent, insurance, truck maintenance, fuel, they burn a lot of fuel, and hose and, and equipment, that's where that money is. There's rest, yeah, $2,000 for stationary, $1,000 for this and that. Oh, and the community engagement, that's a big part of it, too. I mentioned to you, a big part of what the fire department does. That's all wrapped up in a very, very small portion of the overall fire budget. What we're talking about is, how can we save money for the township? I don't think you're going to find a ton out of the fire, maybe, maybe the firehouse, we'll have to see. There's probably some, but there's other places, too, and that's really where the discussion should lie, in my, my opinion. I'm not opposed to the budget, because I think what I heard is, please don't cut any service. So that's, that's kind of my opinion. Is there any other? Bob, did you want to say something?
No.
Oh, you leaned forward, I didn't know.
No.
He's done.
So on the motion, I'll call a vote. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Congratulations. Now, in order to accommodate Barry's request, I guess I can just move right to that? Or do I have, is that under new, what do I need to do there? That's under new business. I think, you know, we said we would accommodate their request, so Barry can make a motion, I'll have a motion a second, and then have the discussion.
Sure. So should I make the motion?
Yeah, yeah.
So I move that the board requests that the township administration evaluate the following three actions. Number, first item is pursue the fire station 83 at New Road and, I'm sorry, repurpose the fire station at New Road and Haprow Road, and explore the possibility of transition to a park and rec center for community use. Second thing is to consolidate the EMS station on Township Road into the firehouse in Richborough, and then pursue to sell the property with the proceeds going to the township. And then the third item is just to continue work with state reps Barcell and Hogan and State Senator Ferry to expand the 205 funding for paid fire departments.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion a second. Any other comment? Barry?
I think we've had enough.
Kim, any comment?
We've had enough.
Bob?
No, these are all things that have been discussed piecemeal in the past. Anything that saves the township is money. If it's a matter of, we need a motion to ask the township to evaluate, evaluate these issues?
Two and three have already been discussed.
Paul, if you could let me finish. If it requires a motion, have Mr. Pellegrino and the township evaluate these things, I'm all for it.
If you feel better to have a motion and approve a motion, that's fine, but we would do that anyway.
Paul, anything else?
I'm in favor. Barry, I would love to discuss all these.
The only I would ask, Barry, on your motion, just so we have clarity, is all three are evaluating.
That's why I said, yeah.
As you said pursue, and I don't want it to sound to the public like we're actually going to do something. I think these are good things. We should always be looking at, we should look at every asset that we have this way, not just a fire station or just something, anything that we look at.
So I did change the word.
Thank you. It's complex. It is complex. I do believe that this could have been done with a simple request, but I'm not opposed to the motion. I think asking Bob to do it would have been fine. Just so I'm clear, just so, I just want to make, so we're going to evaluate the current need for Station 83 as a fire station, I guess, and potential reuse.
See if we repurpose a fire station, a new in Haprow Road, transition to park and rec department.
Okay. So question on that. What if the township says, we'd like to pursue a different use, but not for park and rec, for something else? That might be okay.
Yeah.
Can we just say repurpose? We don't have to say a specific. You okay with that? The second one is, I just want to make sure, is to evaluate the potential of consolidating the, the facilities of Tri-Hampton Rescue Squad and the, the Northampton Fire Department, similar to what we did at Station 73.
Yes.
Which is already in process.
Yeah, and that's, we were already thinking about that anyway. That's, and that's the way, and then the third one was, keep pressure. Okay, so I think that's, I'm, I'm in favor of all of that. I think that's fine. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Man, you guys are giving me a run on my last day. Woo! Wow!
That was intentional, I think.
It's kind of like, you know, your last day at work. Can't give me all. All right. Bob, consider, next up, consider an authorization to advertise an ordinance for Act 54, which is what Bob mentioned earlier. It's housekeeping, I think.
Bear with me for one moment, everything's shut off here. The Pennsylvania Legislature recently passed Act 54 of 2024, amending the Commonwealth's Fiscal Code, authorizing eligible townships to levy dedicated real property taxes for fire protection and EMS services above the limits established in the Second Class Township Code. This action was taken in response to the ever-growing number of municipalities, particularly in developed suburban areas facing a lack of volunteers available and willing to respond to fire and emergency medical emergencies. It also supports the action by suburban communities establishing municipal, municipal fire departments and hiring paid firefighters. If I may make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
I move to authorize advertising and ordinance in compliance with Act 54 of 2024 to allow dedicated tax levies on real property of up to 10 mils for fire protection and up to five mils for emergency medical services as determined annually by the Board of Supervisors.
You have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, any other comment?
No.
Paula?
No, no. It's good.
I'm good with that.
No, and none for me. I think we did that ad nauseam earlier with Bob. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Bob. Barry, this is the firefighter pension that we talked about.
Sure, this is something that's going to benefit the township, and this is something that's going to benefit the township, and we'll be saving money by reclassifying the status of the pension fund for the fire company. And last month, we authorized the advertising of this ordinance, establishing a new fire funds, fund contribution fund.
Barry, can I just stop? I want to open the public hearing. Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that was my bad.
Okay. Public hearing, okay. So last month, we had advertised an ordinance that we wanted to discuss this item. At the end of the day, this is something that's going to save the township money, because the increases are matching what we're getting from the state for the fire fund by classifying as a separate defined contribution pension plan. So if I can make the motion, Adam?
Please.
I move to adopt ordinance 625, creating a separate firefighter pension plan as required by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to qualify for the uniform essential public safety worker state aid to support municipal pension fund planning.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion a second. Any other comment, Barry?
No, I don't. I support it, I think it makes sense.
Bob? All for it. I just, I whispered to Joe, just so it's clear, this is money that's coming from the state to the pension fund. It's not necessarily an additional pension to the firefighters. Okay? It's just how, how it gets paid, and that's why I can't vote on it. I have this conversation all the time, it's nothing coming to me, since there was a question earlier. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Barry. Paula, settlement agreement with Mascaro?
Sure. Litigation focused on monies withheld by the township for contractually related poor service in 2020 by Mascaro and 21, that Mascaro claimed was the result of the COVID-19 pandemic. We reached a proposed settlement under township for, for claims made by the former trash company and counterclaims made by us at the township. Okay. In addition to the monies withheld by the township, Mascaro claimed additional monies due to the company for services it provided to new homes that were never built. In this instance, the township collected the refuse fees because it had, had processes in place to invoice new homes. In addition, Mascaro also sought reimbursement for roll-off containers it provided and waste disposal costs it incurred during the COVID-19 pandemic. Okay. The claim for the waste removal totaled $312,000. And if the proposed settlement agreement is approved, the township will only pay Mascaro, will pay Mascaro $132,000 of the funds we are holding, and retain $44,000 of the funds we are holding for the inconveniences caused by Mascaro during COVID-19 pandemic. The township will not pay anything to Mascaro on any of its other claims, and they will be dropped. The administration township recommends the settlement agreement be approved. If you agree with this recommendation, the following motion, I move to approve the proposed settlement agreement in the matter of solid waste service Mascaro and Sons, Northampton Township, as presented, and to authorize the township manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the township.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, good. I'm, I'm really satisfied, we're not going to waste any more money and any more time on this, this litigation and this court case.
Bob?
We spent a lot of time discussing this in executive sessions over the past couple of years. I think it's a reasonable resolution, let's move on, retain the money, and I think it's a fair settlement.
Barry?
Yeah, I agree. I think it's a fair settlement, let's move on.
Kim?
I don't think it's that fair of a settlement, but I, I'll go along with it. Sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, I think it's probably a good outcome. You know, we, in the end, we didn't, we saved the taxpayers money, we kept money in the township that it was somewhat punitive for the really poor service. Adam? Your microphone's off. And so, as I, sorry about that. I think we say, we will save money for the township. We did not have to pay them everything back, and they agreed that their service was deplorable during that period, and we think we over owed something for that. So I'm, I'm pleased. One thing about settlements, everybody should be unhappy, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, if I meant, just to note, and the public might not realize this, they countersued us. So we were at risk as well, based on.
Good point.
Issues about things they allege we had not reported about new residents. So there were suits, cross-suits filed.
Yep. In the end, we came out on top, which is, I think, important for our, for our residents. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Reports, Kim?
Okay. The Park and Rec team entered 2025 with an ambitious goal to create new and memorable community events that would spark lasting traditions for the residents of Northampton Township and their families. Looking back, it's safe to say we accomplished exactly that. With the dedication of Kristen Fullerton, Special Events Coordinator, and the entire Parks and Rec team, we kicked off the summer with the inaugural Sun and Fun Fest, which welcomed an estimated 2,300 attendees. Residents also enjoyed a Thursday night tradition in the municipal park with our reimagined summer concert series, drawing more than 6,000 residents over the season.[1656.11] And to close out the year, we all welcomed the holidays together at Winterfest, where more than 2,100 residents joined us for Northampton Township's first-ever tree lighting ceremony. The department extends sincere appreciation to the Public Works Department, especially Parks Foreman Mike Sweeney, the Northampton Township Police Department, Northampton Township Fire Department, Tri-Hampton EMS, the Board of Supervisors, the Parks and Rec Board, and all the sponsors and all the dedicated individuals we are fortunate to work with every day. And if anybody, if you went to Winterfest, it was awesome. And it was amazing that such, that it could get done in our township. It was really, really unbelievable. And with the Senior Center, December continues to be a very busy month at the Senior Center. If you're age 55 or better, the opportunities are endless for socialization, special activities, educational programs, parties, day trips, and fun. The center provides a wonderful support system to keep you active, vital, and independent. Join us for some upcoming classes and information presentation about Everyday AI on Thursday, December 18th. Art with a Heart Water Colors Class held the second Wednesday of each month. Ceramics Tuesdays in the center art room. Art Sparks Creative Art Studio. Try a different art medium every six weeks, coming in 2026. And happy holidays from all of us at the Senior Center. And I wish everyone a happy Hanukkah and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Kim. Paula?
Okay. I want to talk about the library a little bit. The library was allowed and asked to be in a vendor tent during the Winterfest, and that was such a great event and well-attended, and the library got a lot of advertising, which is good because they have a new website, which is freelibrarynt.org. And it's very exciting. The library is going to be, is changing and expanding, and everyone's very excited about it. And have a great Christmas, everybody. And also, the Veterans Advisory Commission had the wreath laying this past weekend, and we honored the soldiers and the EMTs and the police, and it was very solemn patriotic ceremony. It was very nice. I think if anyone has never been to a wreath laying, I would suggest they come. And that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Bob?
It's been a long night. First of all, everybody enjoy the upcoming holidays, Hanukkah and Christmas, or whatever you celebrate, Festivus maybe. And some of we get the Festivus. And, you know, the, this, what I'll call spirited debate you saw tonight involving you, involving us, is part of what makes this country great. No one's getting hauled off to the Gulag after that. This is what democracy is. It's not everybody agreeing at gunpoint. So I'm glad, we haven't had one of these in a while. I'm kind of glad we did. And I think in the end, the results were right. And I'll just say, and he's not going to want me to, but I'm going to do it anyway. This is Chairman Salsker's last meeting. He's been the chairman for as long as I've sat on the board. I've gotten to know him well. I knew his brother from my former career as a prosecutor, and his brother's a police officer, so I didn't hold anything I knew about Scott against you. I'm just kidding. Scott's a great guy, recently retired. Congratulations, Scott.
He said the same about you.
Yeah, I know he did. That's why I said it. It's been a privilege. You know, elections are tough. Most of us up here have at some point or another stepped into the arena. You put yourself out there in an election, and it doesn't always go your way, and that's the breaks. I will say, though, losing is one thing. The disgraceful smears of you that were scattered around the public, you a 45-year community person, it was disgusting. And anybody who perpetuated them should be ashamed of themselves. Thank you for your service to this community.
I can add to that also, I would like to, if I could. Mr. Salsker is a very considerate and caring man. He always wants to try to improve the quality of our life here in Northampton. He has no, no seeking any power. I mean, he's just truly, genuinely wants to have everything run smoothly here, and he runs the board, just as you see, very effectively. We're very fortunate here. A lot of residents admire him, and he's got a lot of friends and acquaintances, and I'm proud to live here in Northampton. It's like no other, and we deserve safety and strong people that value our interests that live here. And thank you for all you do, Adam.
Thanks, Bob.
I'm going to miss you. I don't want to cry here.
Thanks. Thank you, Bob.
I'd like to say, also, I'd like to thank you for your service, Adam, to our community, and we worked, we worked together for a lot of years, working for the residents, and we always shared the love of our community. I thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thanks, Kim. Next up, Barry.
Yeah, I just have a few things. On the Planning Commission, there will be a meeting on January 13 regarding the subdivision of Russell Gardens. So Russell Gardens, a new road, there's a proposal to have 18 lots there, which should be eight, you know, R2, half-acre lots. It looks like a very nice development, but that's coming before the Planning Commission, January 13, and it'll come before this board, probably sometime in February or March. We just want to give everybody a heads up on that. Then anybody's driven on Buck Road, I'm sure you may have seen that the Roses Greenhouse has been torn down now. So that whole development's starting. There's going to be about 12 houses built there, luxury homes, large houses on one-acre lots, and that should be happening very shortly. And then, Adam, you know, look forward to continue working with you. You're not done yet. You know, you're going to be working a lot with the firehouse and everything else, and EMS, and advancing that, so unfortunately, you haven't gotten rid of us, so it's a.
This is a great place to be, and it sounds like that last motion put a lot of work into me, so.
Oh, did it? All good stuff.
Probably. Thank you. Thank you, Barry. For me, just a couple of quick things I want to talk about. I highlighted earlier, and as my last liaison report, I'm really proud of this smoke detector program, especially for our seniors. I really think that people should make sure they call the fire department, and we have, in the last year, hit dozens and dozens of homes that didn't have working smoke detectors. Frightening. People that live by themselves, people that just didn't want to climb a ladder, and I feel a lot better that all those houses now have 10-year detectors in there, and they won't have to be bothered by the beep for at least 10 more years. It's just, it's super critical. The other thing I wanted to talk about, and I didn't mention it earlier, but I do want to say that there is a benefit out there for all of our residents, especially those that pay fire insurance, and that is, the rating for the township will go down, which is a good thing in fire protection, and you'll actually start to see, with career folks here, as opposed to volunteer, there will potentially be decreases in your fire insurance. It's important to just let everybody know. There's an ISO rating system that we follow. We work very closely with them. We're in process with working with them now. They wouldn't evaluate our township again until the Holland Station was online for at least one year. So now that it is online for one year, they'll start the evaluation of our fire protection, and if they deem it fit, which I believe they will, our ISO rating will change, and you'll see a corresponding, a little decrease in your fire insurance. So there is a little bit of a win there. I just wanted to let everybody know that. And thank you all for the kind comments, and maybe I'll say something at the end, but that's it. Managers' report?
I have no report, but I certainly want to wish everyone a happy holiday season, and I also want to thank the board, because your support has been tremendous over the last year, actually, over the last many years that I've been here. And you don't realize how much that means to our staff, to have the supervisors support the administration and the employees. It makes all the difference in the world in their productivity, their performance, and their caring. So thank you for that, and I appreciate all that you've done for us.
Thanks, Bob. Bill?
Sure, I have two comments I'd like to share. First, working with the township traffic engineer and the Northampton Police Department, we've completed a traffic study of the intersection of Highland Drive and Lawrence Avenue. The results warrant that this intersection should have an always-stop sign. So at your January 28 meeting, the administration will be putting forth for your consideration ordinance to install always-stop sign at Highland Drive and Lawrence Avenue.
Bill, can I just jump in? Is it Highland and Farmway?
Yes. I'm sorry, I stand corrected. Yeah, sorry.
Sorry.
No worries. Thanks for the clarification.
Make the record straight. That's all right. For a guy that knows the streets, I got all crazy there for a minute. They don't intersect.
Thanks for the clarification. That's my mistake.
There's no fire hydrant there.
That's my mistake. Thank you for that clarification. Lastly, the beginning of December 14, all yard waste will be considered regular trash. The yard waste season has ended, and we must be placed in your regular trash can. No separate yard waste containers or yard waste bags will be collected, just because the facilities that accept them are shutting down for the winter. The, and it won't also, and nothing, yard waste will not be collected if it's outside the can as well. So if you have any questions about that, please contact the Township Administration Office, and happy holidays to everybody and look forward to a new year.
Thanks, Bill. Joe?
Just want to thank all of you once again for the opportunity to have served you this year, as well as the, this fine community that you all represent, and wish all of you a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy New Year to all of you up here and also to everyone in the community. And finally, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that this is Supervisor Salsker's last meeting, and it's been a privilege, and I've enjoyed very much representing you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks.
Engineers' report. Amanda?
Again, no official report, but I'll let go the words of others before me. Again, thank you for the opportunity as well to serve this community for the past nine years. This is a wonderful township to be a part of, wonderful board and amazing staff. I know Mr. Pellegrino does, at times, underplay his involvement, but he does run a wonderful group of staff at this township. Also, happy holidays, and thank you, Mr. Salsker, for your legacy on this board, really. It will have a lasting impact in this township, and, you know, that should not go unnoticed. So thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. If you were all just voters, it would have been a lot easier. Before I get to public comment, I'm just going to say a couple of words so that we can get public comment and get it, it's late. You know, it, being a supervisor is tough work. You know, you have to have thick skin, and I think I have pretty thick skin. Got a lot of attacks over the years. I've been on board for seven years, and, you know, there's people that get very passionate, I'll say, about a subject. I don't say, I won't say that I was ever threatened, but probably close on occasions. And it's quite concerning, but I always kept Northampton Township in the front of my mind. I always thought that, hey, you know, what we do is what we're going to do to make this place a good, a great place to live, and I think it is a great place to live. I came to the fire department at 16 years old. Everybody can see that I'm super passionate about it. And frankly, I was extremely honored when the idea of me becoming the career fire chief was offered to me. And it was offered to me with these four people here on the board at the time, fully supportive. And I was actually going to roll off the board, and that was, that was my plan. And I didn't roll off the board because these four people here convinced me to stay, that it was perfectly legal with the second-class township code. So you can imagine my dismay in my service when there was some predatory misinformation about how that happened. I was very, very disappointed in that, but not stuck on it. I want to move on, move forward, and that's the way it goes. Elections are elections, and that's the way it goes. But I would just say to everybody, and I like what Bob said, ask questions, but ask questions, and when you get an answer, if it's the real answer, that's the answer. You know, don't change the answer to meet your requirements. I'm happy to continue to serve the township in the capacity that I will. I've always given it my all. I will give my all to this township until I'm not here anymore, whatever that means. But thank you all for working together. Lastly, I have to just call out, you know, working with, we have a staff that is just incredible in Northampton Township. I've always thought that from the day I got on the board. When you start to see behind the curtain of how hard these people work, and everybody in the township that works here, including me now, thinks Northampton first. That is their attitude. What is good for the township? That's always the overarching question. What's good for the township? Sometimes people don't agree on that, but that's just the way it happens. So thank you all for the kind words. You'll be seeing me around town. Look for the, you know, the funny red lights. Listen for the siren, and I hope I see you at the fire station and not at your house. Lastly, I, all the people that spoke tonight and spread the word around, I'm happy to have this discussion with anybody that would like to come visit me at my office at the fire station, and I'll talk to you about the fire service and the evolution and how things happen here and the way things work. I think you'd be incredibly blown away by the dedication of the career and volunteer people here in our fire and EMS, and our police department too. But I'd give you that peek behind the curtain, so. Thank you, and the administration too. Thank you. So thank you all. Public comment. First up, Colin Unsworth? And I know you were up earlier, but can you say your name again, please?
Okay, I'm Colin Unsworth, Spring Garden Mill Development, and I know it's getting late, so this is going to be quick. The Spring Garden Mill neighborhood is at the intersection of 332 and Rockway, and since our neighborhood backs up to Tyler Park, we get a lot of students from Council Rock South that cross 332, go through our neighborhood. They're runners, whether it's the track and field or the wrestling team, and they come down our neighborhood, and they go into Tyler Park, and they do their run, and they come back. 332 is a busy road, and even though there's a traffic light there at Rockway and 332, for the safety of these students, I would ask the board to consider painting a crosswalk that goes across 332 for the student's safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll take a look at that. Yeah, we can actually, Bob's going to say a couple of words.
We actually received a grant to look at the two traffic signals. We're building one on St., at St. Leonard's, and we have a grant to upgrade the traffic signals in that area, which will include pedestrian facilities. I'm not sure about a crosswalk, but I think likely there will be one as part of the projects. So that has already been, I believe, considered and is a project that's underway.
Thanks, Bob. Owen Bidwell?
First of all, I want to appreciate you all for listening for what I had to say, taking into consideration. It really shows a lot. Besides that, it's just a few things are sticking with me about conversations tonight. Board members being attacked from them debating, them being accused that they, that they shouldn't be debating, while I think the purpose of having supervisors is to debate, is to really come to the best conclusion of what's best for your constituents. Debating concourse, of course, in our government are what comes to solutions and are what make, make our country great. So also, I feel like that public comment should be used to be, to give each other ideas, to show what the public really thinks. When a supervisor says that we already agreed about this, it kind of shows that public, it diminishes the reason for public comment. So when a supervisor today said that we already agreed about this, shaming another supervisor for opening a motion to amend it and eventually having that approved, it just shows to me that public comment, what really is the point of public comment, what really is the point of our First Amendment if we already agreed about this? And I quote, "We should anticipate the public changing their mind. We should anticipate the public coming up here to voice their concerns, and it shouldn't be agreed upon before. We should anticipate that, hey, there might be some changes that we need to make." We should be open-minded with our discussions. We should not be disrespectful. We should be kind, and of course, we should do what you all were elected to do, and that is to listen to your community and serve it to the best of your abilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Owen. Ed? You're the last one on the list, so you're between us and going home to bed.
Yeah, yeah, well, no pressure.
No, take your time.
I don't even know if I can follow that, but I'll try. It's, I mean, we still have people in the gallery, which is just amazing, right? It's, it's almost 10:30, and we still have people in the gallery. I really, I was going to say a few things, but I won't. I'll just limit it to my one main point, which is, we've heard from everybody on the DS about you and your service as chairperson. I wanted you to hear from the gallery about your service as the chairman. In a word, I would say magnificent. I would say that it brings me great pleasure to come here to the meetings, whether it's just Joe and I or a bunch of people, that you're chairing, because you have, you have the it factor when it comes to being the chairperson of a board of supervisors. And frankly, you have what I call a collaborative demeanor. Very steady, calm, which is no surprise that you're the, you know, the fire chief, right? It's the guy who wants to be in the eye of the storm directing the activity. The noise, right? The friction, sometimes necessary, sometimes, a lot of times unnecessary, but it's your demeanor, Mr. Chairman, that will be missed. And it's not just your demeanor, it's a collaborative demeanor. You find a way. You find a way to pull people together that otherwise don't want to be together, which is sometimes extremely apparent. So I just wanted to tell you from the cheap seats that that was appreciated. I follow you mostly on video, you know, after the meetings, but either way, you're steady as a rock. You are the right person to be the fire chief without any question. No one questions how successful and how great the Northampton Township Fire Company is. No one, no one. But your chairmanship is very impressive, and I think it's very fitting that your last meeting is this kind of meeting that brings out the public, that brings out the discussion, the dialogue. That's what a democracy is. You're the elected officials. You have to sit there, and you have to listen to the people, whether you like it or not, right? And we have to listen to the decisions that you guys make, whether we like it or not. That's democracy in action, right? No one said that citizenship is easy, right? Citizenship is hard, right? It's serious business. But I'll end by saying thank you very much. I don't know how they will replace you. I think that, I don't know if there's, I think there's a reorganization meeting on Monday, January 5. Is that correct? Is that a public meeting? Is that an open meeting? Okay, so good luck with that, folks, because you're going to lose the most collaborative chairperson with the tremendous demeanor, and good luck filling those shoes, but thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Thank you, everybody. Pete, you want to jump in?
How do you know you had to sign up for this plan? Can we just wait till the end?
Past supervisor, Pete Palestine, everyone.
Pete Palestine.
Yes, thank you.
I was a supervisor up there with you guys, not with you guys, but what you did for 24 years in this township. Ed, you said a lot of what I would have liked to said, so I won't repeat them. I will say, number one, I'm glad that you finally had a full house at one of your meetings, because we had a full house almost every meeting that we had back in the day. And the only other difference is we met twice a month instead of once a month, and there's one other thing, that we usually didn't conclude our meetings until after midnight. So you guys had it relatively easy the last 12 years.
I would say relatively efficient is the better word.
I will say this, though. I am still involved in politics, and this was an election that was pretty hard for me personally, because I know and knew all the players in this particular election, and it was hard to be critical of the opposing party. So I tried to help hold back as much as I could, but I can tell you that all four candidates are quality and are quality candidates. All will do a decent job. And Ed, unfortunately, you didn't get elected, but Joe will do a great job, as I'm sure Barry will continue to do a great job. Everybody up there should be commended. Adam, I've known you personally. I was a liaison for public safety as a board member for 24 years. Got to know you, our fire marshal, all of our personnel. We have a great fire, police, and rescue squad department that operates in Northampton Township. I don't like the tax increases, and I'm a senior citizen now. I don't like paying the taxes that we have to pay, but I have to agree that public safety is a primary concern for every resident. If you can't afford to live here, you'll have to move someplace else. I understand that. But if you can live here, at least enjoy the benefits that this board and your past boards have provided. Adam, for you, I'm glad you're staying on board in the fire department. I'm sorry that you're not going to be in the board, and I don't believe, I can't remember a chairman of the board of supervisors that was chairman for more than two consecutive years. You did, you did it for three, correct? Four? Five? Five years. That in itself is a tribute, and as Ed said, you've done a fine job as chairman, and I think everybody up there will agree. So thank you very much, and good luck to you in the future.
Thank you, Pete. Thank you. With no more business, the meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Happy holidays.